We're going to call to order the April 17th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff, which will be led by the Parks Finance Manager, Aaron Rivas.
To the pride of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council did meet in close session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding the partial numbers listed in the agenda, parties Greg Harrington, to confer with our legal counsel regarding one matter of existing litigation, Peoples' Man Guard of Davis versus the city, and one matter of exposure to litigation, referencing the October 10th, 2018 letter from Scott Rafferty, and one item to approve initiation or intervention in action, and no action was taken on any of the above. So with that, we're going to proceed to Item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, state law prohibits the council from taking action or having a discussion about any items brought up under Item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the front door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everybody gets a chance to be heard, and so we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart that simply indicates which agenda item is currently under consideration. The clerk accepts the yellow cards all the way to the conclusion, up to the conclusion of the staff report on a particular agenda item. Once the staff report's done and the testimony and the council comments and questions have begun, we don't take any additional speaking requests. So if you're here and you're dying to speak on a specific agenda item, just be sure to get the card in at some point before the conclusion of the staff report on that item. We also know that for some folks, speaking in public is a nerve-wracking experience, and we're a community, so we do ask that there be not be any boos or cat calls or applause or other demonstrations, which is try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have a couple of requests to speak under Item A. 1A, and the first is by Ann Garrity with Washington Commons. I was going to say Walk Sacramento, but that's just my, that's historical. Ann, welcome.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Ann Garrity, and I'm representing Washington Commons. And just to give you an update, and I've provided an update for you of our project. We purchased the property at Fourth and G, and we're really thrilled. We're in the process of selecting an architect and a developer, and as soon as we do that, we will begin the architectural design process. We're very excited about being in West Sacramento and in Washington neighborhood. There's so many amenities and things keep happening that are exciting to us. So we just want you to know that we're here and that we're going to be more and more a part of this community. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Ann. While you're up, could you give just a little bit more description about what the project is and who it's going to serve?
Okay, so Washington Commons will be a co-housing community, which means that it is self-organized, it's member-organized, and so we're essentially becoming the developer. We expect it will be 30 to 40 condominium flats in a multi-story building, so it'll be an urban infill, taking advantage of this location to be walkable and bikeable. We'll have about 4,000 square feet of community space, including dining room and kitchen and as well as guest rooms. But everyone who is a member will have their own fully independent home there. And we're now a new member of the Chamber of Commerce.
All right. You're real now. You're legit.
Legit. Thank you.
Thanks, Ann. All right, Edward Castellano?
Good evening, council members and Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to speak on Sacramento Avenue again. I don't know the process of what can be done on Sacramento Avenue, but I really think that you should try and find out why the property owners have abandoned that property, the large one section with the fencing around it. What's that, eight years, 10 years now? That's been up there. The gates are broken. It's nothing but a weed lot, and I don't even know how many acres are there. It's quite a few. The other part has abandoned, what is it? There's several different things. It used to be Roberts, and then it was a bar and whatever. It's, well, you know, it's abandoned. There was a little shop next to it, and then there's huge overgrowth, depression, all kinds of wild weeds and trees that have died, and it's horrible looking. I think the city should try to put some pressure on the owners of this property to make it look better. You know, maybe you could plant a whole thing of flowers in front of it, like some areas. But it's at the entrance to what was Elkhorn Village and Broderick. I mean, it means a lot to people that have been there. I've been there since 1953. My father bought a house there and on Inglewood, and I have one on Elder now. It's pride for the city, you know, we're all one city, and I think you should take that into consideration for the betterment of the city. Put some pressure on them. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you, and I appreciate the comments. And I asked if the city manager would have staff maybe look into, I think you were talking about the corner of the lot, the big lot at Sacramento and Jefferson, basically. That place is, that's east, right?
South side of Sacramento.
Yeah, that's right.
Between Jefferson going eastward.
And railroad tracks. Okay. Look into that, because I noticed that too, that that fence has been pretty beat up for a while. So maybe update staff on maybe property or that area, and I know there may be an update on the other two lots further east.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Then with that, we're going to proceed to Item 1B, which is council reports. Are there any this evening? Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes. I participated in League of Cities Sacramento Valley Division Board of Directors meeting April 8th, and they will have their next meeting on May 10th in Paradise, where they'll be having a panel discussing the rebuilding of the community. And Assemblymember Gallagher is going to be invited to discuss legislation on emergency disaster preparedness and community resiliency. And also, there's a Rural Cities Working Group that is going to be formed. They're organizing to either form an association or a caucus in the League of Cities, and they're interested in our participation. We'll continue to provide updates as they continue the discussions. And the next League of Cities Legislative Advocacy Day is this Wednesday, in case you're interested in participating.
Councilmember Sandy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Yolo County Housing Commission met earlier today, and in addition to a number of administrative items like approving an auditor, mid-year financials, and IT plan, we also approved the opening of the Housing Choice Voucher Waitlist by direct referral for targeted funded mainstream vouchers. And these vouchers, the mainstream vouchers are designated to serve non-elderly persons with disabilities ages 18 to 61, and direct referrals will be made from the County Health and Human Services Agency, and the waitlist will be up to 200 individuals. I just wanted our council to meet and staff to be made aware of that. I also attended the Yolo Healthy Aging Alliance's Aging in Action Celebration on April 7th, and the founders of the Bright and Broderick Community Action Network were honored, Charlotte Dorsey and Jim Brewer, some of the founders. And on April 8th, I attended the Crime Victims Tribute Ceremony at the Woodland Opera House, and two West Sacramentoans were unfortunate victims of domestic violence, and they were honored and recognized by the District Attorney's Office. And their strength and perseverance were recognized along with members of our West Sac Police Department who responded to their calls.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. I have a few things to report on, so I'll start with on, not in chronological order, but just in what's in front of me. Back a couple weeks ago, on April 8th, we had a meeting of the Yolo County Transit District, and in that meeting, the board did approve adoption of the current YCTD fair structure. And if you recall back last fall, YCTD took up a lowering of fees as a mechanism to do two things. One is to address some imbalance between the rate changes that were happening in regional transit and YCTD, but also as a mechanism to see if they could spur ridership. So that was the first kind of leg of that effort. So we did, but that was just the beginning point. We had to make those changes permanent, so there's no change to what riders are feeling today. So what we're seeing in areas is ridership actually starting to tick up, particularly in Woodland and in areas of Davis. But I think the areas that I've asked them to follow up with for staff, as well as to ensure as we go forward, the district is going through a pretty intensive, we just signed a contract, got a contract approved to do a comprehensive ridership study and transit study on behalf of the district, looking at all the routes. And again, we emphasized there is a drop in ridership in West Sacramento. And YCTD staff thinks that the via ridership has changed ridership a little bit, but we need to dig into that. And I think part of what we need to really, it's an opportunity for us to better learn ridership patterns between YCTD, TD's Yolo Bus services in West Sacramento, as well as what VIA is doing. So I asked them, again, staff, our staff in West Sacramento, to make sure we're connecting with the YCTD staff, and make sure we're all going to eyes wide open about where the changes in ridership, if there's a better time to leverage what Yolo Bus can do for us versus what VIA is picking up. And I know we have that on agenda a little later, but I just want to make sure we are, we're kind of addressing that. So again, those are kind of two big things that came out of that meeting. Then on, sorry, back on March 18th, because I had missed the meeting right after that, I did participate in the Mayor's Commission on Climate Change. There's a few updates, but on that, that meeting was a really thorough, thoughtful meeting. It was a three-hour meeting, about three and a half hours, because of a lot of public input on it, and it's getting a lot of, and rightly so, a lot of attention from folks from around the community and the region about the work both Sacramento and West Sacramento are currently doing and what we can do. So in that meeting, we had some updates from folks that had been working on it. So the part of the commission and what they're addressing are around the built environment, looking at how we, the region, or how Sacramento and West Sacramento may be looking at our development patterns, land use in the built environment. They're also looking at mobility, and they're also looking at community resiliency and health as a way, a mechanism to, again, how can we address climate change in those areas? And outside the commission, the local government commission has engaged some technical advisory committees. So these are groups of volunteers and stakeholders from around, in the private sector, public sector, and those that are interested in it, to get together. They had three sessions. So at, I'm sorry, at this meeting, we had a presentation by the Technical Advisory Commission on the built environment, and I will pass this out to make sure, staff to make sure everybody gets a copy of their recommendations, but they had a number of recommendations that were really thoughtful around areas that we could probe, further probe. Their work is not done, so these are sort of their preliminary findings, but we did provide them some more direction on where to go, especially in regards to how you match it up with kind of current activities that are going on. How do we get some prioritization around that so that people, not just what we can do from a prioritization, what's the most important, what has the most effect on greenhouse, but what's actually right in front of us and we need to be doing already. So it was really an important meeting for us to give them feedback and think about implementation as well. We also had, in that vein, had a presentation from the City of Oakland, from a gentleman named Daniel Hamilton, who's the Sustainability Manager of the City of Oakland, who gave a really good presentation on some of the steps they took to address prioritization of these things. Because, and it also addressed community engagement, which we felt was super important, that how do you get the communities to understand what you're trying to do? And it also brings an element of the social equity around making sure you address neighborhoods and what can be done in those neighborhoods where it isn't laying over some other regulation, how you might address climate change, in a really impact that neighborhood, or have a different lens once you kind of get to that neighborhood. So it was a really good, for me, it was a good introspective look at how we can go about kind of looking at all the elements. Everybody has ideas about where we can go forward, but how do you prioritize that in a sensible way that the community can engage in, understand, and then you can actually get to work. So it was a really good meeting. A couple of other items I wanted to bring to the council's attention. I know you're probably going to bring it up, the mayor spoke at one of the engagement meetings around the Climate Commission with that Sac State. But in another edition, we are going to have a youth high school engagement session, a youth summit for high schoolers. It was originally planned to be this coming, or next Saturday, the 27th, but we just decided last week to move it. We're learning from all the high schools as seniors are starting to check out, so we're having a hard time finding kids that are really, that have a passion around that, and are starting to think about finals and graduations. And they have a lot of activity in the spring. So we kind of re-trench from the 27th, and we're going to move it to the fall, either September, October. But the host school for that will be River City High School. So I want to thank the board, the board members who are engaged about this a couple of months ago, as well as Linda, our superintendent. They've been overly gracious, especially Principal Moicic, Dan Moicic, took us on a tour. They have it all ready, ready for us to host at River City High School. They have a number of kids and clubs over there that want to get engaged in this. The timing was really hard for everybody, so he 100% agreed, let's move it to the fall. We can give it our full attention. So we will be engaging in that later in the fall. So I was really happy, and so this is sort of a shout out to our high school partners and our school partners for stepping up and maybe being a part of that. And I think that's all I have. So thank you.
Mayor Proton Marozko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No commission reports. However, I wanted to take a moment to highlight some programming that's been occurring in our community that rose from some measuring funds that we dedicated back in 2018. Specifically, the West Sac Police Department's Spring Break Youth Boxing Camp. Yesterday, I had the great opportunity to visit the camp, and I've been a volunteer with the camp for the last two years as a speaker with the children. But yesterday was a little different. I was an honorary coach, teaching the kids punches and kicks and working with some of the other coaches to engage local youth. There were approximately 30 of them that were participating in the program.
Is this why Chief McDonald's not here?
Yeah.
The celebrated boxing match between the two of you has left him unavailable for a meeting.
You called it. You called it. Smarter than you look, Mr. Mayor. Very good. But we had approximately 30 kids there, ranging in age, I don't know, maybe nine to 16, 17 years old. A lot of them were just incredibly motivated to connect and engage and be mentored by some of our local law enforcement officers. And what I saw was a lot of magic being made between, during those connections, between the coaches who were just having a great time with these kids and kids who had an opportunity to see people outside the uniform. And so anyhow, the graduation for the summer, for the spring boxing camp will be tomorrow at 2:30 PM at, is it 500 Jefferson? It'll be in the auditorium, and there'll be a lot of parents there that are very proud of the children's progress and seeing how they matriculated from the program. But moreover, during a time when the social climate is such that there's so much distrust everywhere, but a lot of times, within communities of color and youth of color to law enforcement agencies, I think it's a fantastic step in the right direction by our department, and I've only seen it improve over the last several years, and I'm so grateful to be a part of it and to see it happening in our city. So kudos to West Sac Police Department.
All right. Thank you. I had a couple. So Mayor Proton Ledesma already noted the youth summit that was held for college students at Sac State last week, for students from Sac State, Los Rios Community Colleges, and UC Davis on climate change. It was extraordinarily successful, and the youth that were there were, there were sessions after sessions for, I think, 14 hours of young people deeply engaged in solution creation around climate change and on the environmental side, but mostly actually on the social, the social side and other dimensions of that challenge. It was a really, really strong showing from young people, and many, 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 many from West Sacramento as well. Also presented at the Clean Start Retreat last week, Clean Start is the kind of the green energy entrepreneur collaborative in the region that was one of the things that merged out of Sarda essentially. And they're very interested in West Sacramento because we, you know, are actually an item we have coming up later, but the city's leadership, both in the clean energy side and chargers and other sorts of dimensions of the clean energy infrastructure, but also in supporting entrepreneurs and new technology more generally. So we had a good conversation about the things that cities like ours need in order to be nimble supporters of that kind of economic development and job creation. We also hosted here in the chambers last week, the Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce Catalyst Leadership Program, which is being run right now by the Governor's Appointment Secretary, Mona Pascal. So it's a very, it's a very high-powered group of folks, young leaders, young professionals from throughout the region that we hosted here for a session. They also were interested in how does West Sacramento do it? You know, what is the, what's the secret sauce to West Sacramento's success? And again, many, many of them, for, you know, are residents of our city, but also developing folks who want to move here, want to start their own businesses here, or move their companies here, was valuable as well. The Superintendent Luna and Dr. Pimentel, the Dean of the Center, who is currently the Assistant Vice Chancellor for something at the Los Rios Community College District level, he's been elevated up from the deanship for a while. The three of us did a session at the California Community Colleges Adults and Occupational Education Association Conference around, it was the featured plenary session, and it was on the home run as the state's most promising local initiative around education and workforce development, and was an extremely well attended, there were 500 people there who were up early in the morning, wanting to learn, many of whom had taken a run at internships or at free college or other things, and no one had ever seen a community like ours be able to launch all of it together. And to see the how, the school district and the college and the city have worked so flawlessly together, I think was something that a lot of folks were trying to learn from as well. So that was really positive. And then yesterday, we hosted at Carroll's Restaurant, the mayor of the city of Bruges, Bruges, France, that, you know, just shortly after the tragedy at the cathedral of Notre Dame, he was here. Bruges is a small village in the eastern part of France, near the German border, that was liberated in World War II in one of the 10 most celebrated battles for the US Army during World War II, the Battle of Bruges. And it was liberated by the 442nd Regiment, which was the all-Japanese-American regiment. Japanese Americans weren't permitted to serve in other parts of the armed forces at that time. And so this was an all-Japanese-American regiment who liberated the French from the Germans in World War II, and also liberated the rescuers that had gone in before, which was the Lost Regiment of Texas. So it's a very celebrated story in World War II history, certainly in France as well. It's a big, it's a big deal. And so we hosted them there. And I would say that they were, they're interested in a lot in West Sacramento, but they think of us as some enormous city compared to the 35 people, 3,500 people that live there. But I think mostly, they just walked away from Carroll's Restaurant, not with an, in utter awe at the amount of food that Americans eat for breakfast, as opposed to a small café au lait and a croissant, and when what came was a plate full of home fries and bacon and five eggs and a biscuit, and, you know, and they had brought a box of croissants as well. That was, I think, the most poignant memory of the diplomatic exchange between our two cities. And then finally, in most substances, the SECOG Board, the Strategic Plan, the Transportation Committee met earlier this month, the Strategic Planning Committee. Last week, we had our board retreat on Friday, and we have a board meeting tomorrow. Many, many issues are coming to a head at SECOG and they're really important policy ones. At the top level, the retreat was really oriented around a couple of key questions, because we have a lot of new board members who weren't around for the development of the blueprints and many of the policy initiatives that have happened over the last several years. So one of the key framing questions for the retreat was, should we mostly invest in fixing what we already have in the region, or should we be investing in new capacity? And I made, I made a very strong case that it's both, but new capacity really matters, that cities like ours, after the blueprint, adopted new general plans and new specific plans that incorporated a lot more growth than our normal fair share, that allowed places like Yolo County and the City of Davis that didn't want to grow at all to not grow so much. But we agreed to take their growth because we had capacity on the waterfront and in the urban areas of the city. But the deal was that we will do that, and the transportation dollars then need to follow where the growth is happening. So if we, now that we've made all those commitments, if now we were to say as a region, oh, you know, actually, we're not going to build anything new at all, we're only going to invest in fix it first, that shifts the resources to, you know, Sacramento County and to other places in the region that have more lane miles and more people. So it's actually a very fundamental, like existential issue for us around what financing should look like. That, so that's the retreat conversation. The board is also taking up in the moment the Metropolitan Transportation Plans. I briefed the council on this many, many times in the past, and it will come to a head because, as I think I've noted before, we are, the region is not making sufficient progress on the reductions in vehicle miles traveled, mostly because the land use pattern is not changing fast enough in the region. So it doesn't matter how much money you spend on buses or on sidewalks, if the land use pattern makes sidewalks and, I mean, walking and buses not economically viable for either the public sector to provide or for consumers to pick. And so we have a major problem because the state has increased our climate change goals, but we are actually slipping in our progress even towards the old goals. So we are adopting a set of performance indicators and performance metrics for the new Metropolitan Transportation Plan that are aggressive and that try to take this and fix it, while at the same time, as I said, we have a lot of new jurisdictions in the region with relatively new city councils and mayors that don't quite understand the whole history of this. Because accomplishing this, meeting those goals would mean, as an example, that 70 Because accomplishing this, meeting those goals would mean, as an example, that 74% of new homes over the next 20 years would need to be small ladder attached products. So you think of either some of the smallest homes in the state streets or a typical development in the Washington neighborhood or in the Bridge District that are, that don't consume so much land. That has to be by far the norm over the next 20 years in order to affect this, the changes in the base land use map for the whole region, largely because we didn't make enough progress in the last 10 years. So if we, if we had made a lot of progress in the last 10 years, that number instead of being 74% might be 50%. But when we slipped instead, it means now that, you know, the distance between where we are and where we have to be in order to meet the, have a sustainable land use pattern in the region has gotten bigger. So for West Sacramento, it's really, it turns out to be an advantage because that's where most of our development is projected to occur, is in infill areas in throughout, throughout the, you know, north of the, north of the Barge Canal, with only a few in the Southport area. So that general framing is actually good for us, but it will be a battle with some of the other cities in the region who would like to continue doing kind of the rural residential McMansion-style development, which is exactly what causes the worst changes in the climate change and the air pollution numbers that we care about. So that's happening. The plan will also include some road brake pricing strategies. This is responsive to two things. One is we don't have enough money to do all this stuff that would need to get done, including maintenance. And second, that the gas tax is not a, is not an effective source of funding for transportation in the long run. I mean, it's effective, it's very effective right now, and it will be effective three years from now. In 30 years from now, it will not be effective at all, both because of the reduction in the amount of driving and because of the number of vehicles that will not be using gas or the equivalent. So we are going to be testing some pricing strategies, which may include things like pay-as-you-go mileage-based fees in some places, in some ways, in some routes. That's all to be determined later. And then some additional express lanes being added to the main corridors, like 50 and 80 and 5, certainly between here and Davis, as one of, as the addition of an additional lane or two, with at least one of them being some sort of high occupancy toll lane or some other price-based approach to try to pay for it. So you expect that that's going to be a, be in the overall plan and then get expressed in some of the policies that follow. The last thing I would mention from this framework is just that we're also getting closer now to the project list. So our current draft scenario for the Metropolitan Transportation Plan includes its list of projects that are envisioned to be funded over the length of the plan, so, you know, over the next 20 or 25 years. And based on those growth projections, you know, the list of those projects, it's, you know, a lot of pages, and there's a page and a half of Davis projects and about a page and a half of Woodland projects. There are five and a half pages of West Sacramento projects and a half a page of Yolo projects. So it reflects where the growth is supposed to occur. But just to, you know, briefly summarize some of the key elements of it, you know, there's funds for the modifications to 15th Street between Jefferson and South River Road that we've talked about previously, the Third and C Gateway improvements, the reconfiguration of South River Road, the Clarksburg Branch Line Trail from River City High School to the city limits, improvements and extensions. The Enterprise Crossing is the largest one on the list at $125 million. The widening of Harbor Boulevard, the conversion of the I Street, the upper deck of the I Street Bridge, additional trail from I Street Bridge to the Indian Heritage Center, improvements to the Enterprise Boulevard, to the interchange at I-80 and Reed, widening of Industrial Boulevard, streetscape improvements on Jefferson, Lake Washington widenings, locks drive modifications, Pioneer Bluff improvements and connectors and collectors, more riverfront trails, changes at the port, rail street improvements, the Seaway property infrastructure, and on, and on, and on. So all over the city, in every part of the city, there's at least, at least a couple of projects, and it's, you know, it's approaching a billion dollars worth of projects. So it's a very significant plan to invest in West Sacramento infrastructure over the coming years. We then, it doesn't, but it's not self-implementing, but we then have to actually have projects to apply for the money and compete, compete for the money year by year by year by year. But you're not eligible to compete if you're not in this plan. So the five and a half pages of projects of every size is really important for us, and I think we've gotten more or less, more or less everything that we've tried to get into the, into the plan is here with maybe, you know, one or two exceptions. We've done pretty well. So I want to also acknowledge the Public Works staff and director who've been the ones working on these specific things to make sure that we're competitive and get every single thing that we need into the plan. So, sorry, it's a long report, but this has been a, you know, we've had three of these SAICOG meetings in just the last two weeks and some major, major steps forward on some of these elements. All right, we have no appointments, so we'll move from item C to presentations, and the first is a presentation of a proclamation declaring April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Is there a motion on the proclamation?
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Ladesma, seconded by Councilmember Sandin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I'd ask Mayor Protim Orozco to present the proclamation on behalf of the council.
This is always my favorite proclamation of the year, specifically because I spent four of my 15 years as a prosecutor in the child abuse, sexual assault child abuse unit of the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office. I am very proud to host this or hold this proclamation from the city council, from the city of West Sacramento, declaring April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and to provide it to my friend and fellow community leader, Katie Viegas. Katie Viegas is the executive director of the Yolo County Children's Alliance and has been for quite some years. The Yolo County Children's Alliance is one of the largest, if not the largest, multi-service agency serving children and families in our community, both in West Sac and throughout Yolo County, providing a variety of different services, one of which is that we oversee the Child Abuse Prevention Council, as well as provide lots of different resources to people in the community, people who need access to not only awareness and education, but also support for how to help raise healthy children. I know that YCCA has created a handout that they are distributing throughout our city to assist parents and give them the tools they need, but also that we have staff that provides lots of hands-on assistance. So I'm going to turn it over to Katie for just a moment, and then I will ask for her the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Protim, Katrina Orozco, and she is also the board chair of the Yolo County Children's Alliance, so extra special thank you. And I'd like to thank the city council and mayor for presenting this to us and supporting us and the families we work with throughout Yolo County. Today, I just want to mention that we have a new Child Abuse Prevention Council with the Children's Alliance. It's all community members from Palo Yolo, the first five Yolo, to Office of Education, to Yolo CASA, probation, health, community health centers, a lot of new people on our CAPC, so we're super excited about that. And as well, we have developed a new brochure that you noted. It's nurturing children during times of stress, and this is a parent guide, and we do a new one every year. And if you haven't seen them, they're available on our website at yolokids.org. And this year, with our Child Abuse Prevention Council, Resilient Yolo, and Foster Care Kinship Education, we're screening a movie called Resilience at our local library here in West Sacramento on April 29th. And it's the biology of stress and the science of hope, and it's a, it's a great movie, kind of a heavy one, and so go in with that expectation, but it should be a good free opportunity for folks to get more information on resilience. And we have packets for the city council with a blue pinwheel that is our marker for child abuse prevention this year, so thanks for having us.
Thank you. On behalf of the city council of West Sacramento, I'm here to offer YCCA, Katie Viegas, the proclamation of the city council, declaring April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Thank you.
So you're not behind the podium?
I can do it.
Okay, perfect. There we go. Okay.
All right, next up, we have item three, which is Presentation of Proclamation Recognizing the 20th Anniversary of the California Fuel Cell Partnership. Is there a motion on this proclamation?
Move to approve.
Okay, so moved by Councilmember Guerrero, seconded by Mayor Protim Orozco. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. I'd like to invite Chris White to join me at the podium.
Team mayor, each other's medium.
So this is, we were both here for the beginning of this, so this is a proclamation of the city recognizing the 20th anniversary of the California Fuel Cell Partnership, and I couldn't be prouder of the work of the Fuel Cell Partnership, in particular Chris, but the whole team. So I'm, and we don't do this one every year, so I figure if you're only coming every 20 years, maybe we will actually read the proclamation in honor of the occasion. So whereas the California Fuel Cell Partnership was created in April 1999 by public and private sectors to commercialize fuel cell electric vehicles in hydrogen fueling, and has remained headquartered in West Sacramento and vital to the development of zero emission vehicle technology and related technology, and whereas fuel cell electric vehicles of all types and sizes operate on California roads and are fueled by hydrogen from the tank and oxygen from the air, and are already twice as clean as conventional vehicles, and whereas these passenger cars have EPA's verified ranges of 312 to 380 miles, which I think you will point beats my Tesla, filling up in three to five minutes at one of many hydrogen stations at a growing network developed, built, and operated by many Fuel Cell Partnership members, and whereas California has 18 years and millions of miles of experience with fuel cell electric buses, with more than 30 buses in operation powered by the fuel cell technology and systems of California Fuel Cell Partnership members, among others, and whereas California has the first demonstrations of heavy-duty fuel cell electric trucks in North America, with more expected from manufacturers, and the Fuel Cell Partnership members and their understanding of issues have been enriched by the interaction with public and private sectors, and whereas the research of university members, including the University of California campuses of Berkeley, Davis, and Irvine, and California State University of Los Angeles, has contributed to the foundational work of the partnership, and whereas the partnership's headquarters is regularly visited by international delegations of government, we've hosted several together there, when Carol's isn't available, private industry and academia that seek to learn how California is supporting clean vehicles and hydrogen infrastructure, and whereas the partnership's members have helped shape its local, state, and federal policy to help commercialize fuel cell electric vehicle technology and educate dignitaries, the public, firefighters, and emergency responders, policymakers, and others. Now therefore be proclaimed by the city council of the city of West Sacramento, that we hereby congratulate the California Fuel Cell Partnership on 20 years of service to California, to the United States, and to the world, and congratulate its diverse members for their leadership and collaborative efforts to further fuel cell electric vehicle technology, hydrogen fueling infrastructure, and related policy, and their contributions in helping reduce greenhouse gas emissions and pollutants. Congratulations and thank you for your service, Chris.
Thank you. So that proclamation missed something that was really important, and that is that 21 years ago, when the California Fuel Cell Partnership went looking for a place to build the first-ever hydrogen fueling station, and we had a methanol station back then, too, and a repair facility to repair fuel cell cars, there was only one city that said, "That sounds like a great idea. You should do it here." And then 15 years later, when we said we want to build the first in the world retail hydrogen station, where should we put it? The city of West Sacramento said, "We should put it here. We already know how to do this." It's been remarkable to be here in the city, to be in a city that says yes first and figures out how to do it later, that allowed us to build things before building codes were there, that allowed us to sell fuel before the laws were set up to sell fuel. And we may be the only business in West Sacramento that has had visits from a president of the United States, four governors, vice chancellors and premiers from other countries, and at the same time, hosted Girl Scout troops and 5th grade classes, and just folks from everywhere all the time. So I, on behalf of a resident who lives here and a person who works there, I thank you all so very much for this city's support in being the zero emission vehicle capital of the world.
Yeah, just to underscore, for folks who were here when the Fuel Cell Partnership first opened up, it was before so much of the beautification of the corridor around the freeway and industrial, and for local residents, the pride that we had the moment that those flags went up, and, you know, the signs, the brands from all the world's most, you know, biggest auto and fuel companies in the world were converging on our city to make, to create an entirely different energy economy in the world and in our state. It was a huge point of pride for us, and the partnership's been an incredible part of our community, and as of course Chris has. I'm fond of reminding folks that Chris is a quintessential West Sacramento leader, having been chair of the Chamber of Commerce and its ambassador of the year every, every other year. But also, you know, for, you know, for anybody that didn't, you know I'm going to say this, Chris, so anybody who just enjoys having a good time in the city, Capital Bowl would not be what it is today without the years that pretty much as a volunteer, Chris and her, and ultimately her son, put into bringing Capital Bowl to life and running that operation while still having a full-time job at the Fuel Cell Partnership and being an active volunteer in the chamber and so many other things. It's for both, for both Chris and obviously for Katie, the former school board member and activist in so many ways, the best of West Sacramento. So thank you for being with us tonight.
And also, just wanted to add really quick, one of the newest members, Uwetani Corporation of America.
Yes.
Was recently acquired, the West Sacramento Hydrogen Station, and will be having a ceremony there on May 16th.
That's right.
Everybody come.
May 16th, not at the partnership, but the Uwetani, at the station on South River Road, so, all right.
Right there. My Indian people from Japan.
Oh, that's cool.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the consent agenda, which is items four through 13. Are there any items to remove, or any items for separate question or comment?
Yes, four.
All right, then, oh, sorry, 13. Okay.
Sorry, is it 11? I'm sorry, I have 11 at the top, not 13.
All right, okay. Not the minutes?
No.
Okay. All right, item four then is consideration of acceptance of the comprehensive annual financial report and related documents for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018. Councilmember Guerrero.
Yes, thank you. I do have a couple of questions. One, if you could just give us a little, a little background, it's my first time receiving this report, and the purpose and the next steps and what it is we can do to help us evaluate and look into it a little further, and then I have another question thereafter.
Sure. So number four is just our annual, comprehensive annual financial report. Every government agency is required to have an independent audit on an annual basis, and this is the resulting report. It has grown from a set of basic financial statements to this more comprehensive document that includes some supplementary and statistical information that allows you to compare apples to apples, different government agencies, even cities and counties, and so this is just a requirement. We have completed our audit, this is the report, and so we're presenting it to you, and it's on our website for the public to view as well.
Thank you. And the audit is done by an entity that we contract with, that we select the?
Correct. So this year was our first year with a new audit firm, Crowe LLC. We were in front of council several months ago, almost a year ago, I guess, after doing an RFP and interviewing several audit firms, and we selected Crowe to do this audit, and so this was their first audit of our financials.
Okay, very good, thank you. And also, in looking at the CAFER, there is, I had a question regarding the West Sacramento Home Run Initiative, Measure E, on upcoming action or milestones, and on that page, it has some recommendations on what to consider for funding and other things, and if you can take a look at state funding, there's a number of state budget proposals that are being considered, which I think are going to help supplement and, you know, maybe provide a more robust program for us here in West Sacramento.
Sure. Thank you.
All right, we had one request for public comment on this item, and that's by Pat Flint.
Thank you, mayor and council members. All in all, I think it was a very good budget. I have a couple of concerns. The item adjustments, there were seven of them, they related to West Sacramento Flood Control Agency due to the change of one debt. Control Agency due to the change of one debt refunding schedule and recording of the contribution from the city, and other adjustments were related to accrual of expenses for the state car project, one acquisition of port property, as well as a reversal of deferred liability on the wastewater plant decommissioning costs. And they've all been corrected, as far as I read in the budget. My concerns are, and you know how I feel about the streetcar, if it were going to benefit the entire city, I would have no problem with it. But the streetcar project is why I'm calling the money pit. We're putting way too much money into a project that there really doesn't seem to be a future on at the moment. Our tax dollars are being spent, and I feel that those tax dollars need to be spent on a project right now that would encompass the entire city, because we do have a terrific traffic problem in this city, and that, you know, that's not me doing rush hours, because I'm a rush hour avoider. It's, there's traffic here 24/7. Our freeways are an absolute mess. There has to be a way that we keep the streetcar project in the future when we are assured funding, when it's not going to cost West Sacramento as much money as it's cost so far. West Sacramento is slated to put in at least $35 million, of which 16 million of that's already been spent, according to the way I'm reading the budget. I could be wrong, so somebody can correct me. But I just, I just don't see it as a project that is benefiting us in the near future. And so I can't see keep putting money into it if we don't have federal funding, if we don't have state funding, and, you know, keep it at a taxpayer, at least amount that we can spend as tax-wise, if it's only going to benefit a few. The other one is the home run project, and I'm still trying to learn a lot about it. My concerns there is I see a lot of money going to administrative services, data gathering, that sort of thing, and very little really reaching our students. I think it's, you know, I support anything that we can do to help students in any way that we can. But I want to take a hard look at how the money's being spent. We don't have a universal preschool program here in West Sacramento, so which preschools are doing qualifying for the home run? And it's not that I'm against the program, it's just that money-wise, I think it's not being spent well.
All right, thank you. So this is our, the annual financial report, it's not a budget, it's, we're not making any choices tonight in how we spend dollars, it's simply a report of how the money was spent and the auditor's assessment to assure that we're following the appropriate practices in it. And once again, it's a solid, it's a solid report back from, from the auditor, this is an over $100 million organization, so that's, that's saying a lot about the, our staff team and about the practices that have been put in place as well. So very proud of the report. I will say, on the, on the, the streetcar and the Measure E pieces, the streetcar piece was, the voters of the city voted for Measure U and V with two components to that, to those, to that measure. One was flood protection, and the second was streetcar. Not transportation, not whatever the council might want in any particular year, but it was streetcar. And so we, you know, we, it is general fund dollars that we have the legal authority to redirect to other purposes. You know, so if streetcars become illegal or what have you, we don't have to build one anyway, so that there's, there is a backstop there. But it is our moral obligation to do what we can to accomplish the will of the voters, as expressed in Measure U and Measure V. And we have done that by securing $150 million worth of state and federal dollars in order to support the project. The project, is it a key inflection point in terms of how, and in what shape it will move forward, and it wouldn't surprise me if there are significant changes to it? But it is both required by that ballot, by the commitments that were made in that ballot measure and the advisory measure that passed with it, and also by all of the development agreements, and the development approvals, and the zoning, and the specific plans, and the general plans that have been approved since that time. So we can't simply not do it or build something in some other part of the city. It is fundamental to the land use approvals and the SEQA analysis that's already been done for all of that. So we are, well, I expect that we will have some, at the, at the point of the streetcar joint powers board, taking some action on this in the next few weeks or a couple of months, around some initial scoping of issues for the council, the councils of both cities to take up in light of the, the construction bids that we, that we got back inflated by the tariffs and some of the underground issues, and of course, the overall construction economy. But, but there are no changes that we anticipate today, but certainly something will be different in, in the project that emerges and comes back to, the set of options that come back to the council in the coming weeks and months. All right, so that then brings us to item 11, which is consideration of approval of amended and restated concessionaire agreement with Kletterwald Heritage Oaks LLC for development and use of the Heritage Oaks Parks property. Mayor Fortemmo Roscoe.
Thank you. Tracy, I don't have a list of questions, I just wanted to commend you for your work on this project. There's been a lot of feedback from the community, people have been wanting to know, when's the new ropes horse coming in, and I'm happy to finally have an update for, for folks that had questions. And I appreciate the explanation of, you know, why, due to extensive rain and high groundwater levels, as well as other issues revolving around the post-fire assessments that, you know, we had difficulty getting our arborists and other, other administrative issues that caused a delay. But it's great to see that we're going to have another amenity beginning construction. Is it April 2019?
Yes, actually, this week they started-
Yeah, it's on there.
...on the street drainage improvements, finally. It rained Monday and Tuesday, they were supposed to start on Monday, but they started.
Yeah, grading has started out there, so yeah, good job.
You know, for, for our community to have this unique treetop experience, as you mentioned, I mean, this is something that's going to be great for not only West Sacramento, but also for the region. And tonight, we have the opportunity to look at our parks, you know, master plan, and just to think about one additional opportunity for folks in our community. Now, you know, we're getting on scooters and jump bikes and head into the barn, and this is just one more place where we can enjoy some outdoor activity and recreation, so thank you for all your hard work on this one.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And item 12 then is consideration and award of a contract to Blue Tent Farms for vegetation management services and open space park sites, port properties, and water treatment plant areas. Mayor Fortemmo Roscoe.
Again, another, just a comment, I think it was maybe 2015, I heard the mayor at a state of a city called us the goatiest city in the region. And, you know, there's been a lot of great feedback about the goats. Not only are they a cost-effective and environmental-friendly way of dealing with hard-to-reach areas, especially those with a lot of trees, but the kids go crazy over those goats. And so a few weeks ago, I think it was my husband and our kids' room took their bikes out just to look at the goats. It's like a petting zoo without the petting, but again, a fantastic, cost-effective way of getting our city, the vegetation cleared. I appreciate having the opportunity to bring Blue Tent Farms. They've done work here in the past-
Correct.
-done excellent work. I mean, it's, I like the goats are us, you know, business name, but we'll deal with Blue Tent, and tell them thank you for, for bringing in this wonderful amenity to the city.
Thank you. And Sam Cooney's here in the audience, and he really is the key staff person managing the program and has done a great job with it. Sam is the goatiest staff person in West Sacramento. Thank you, Sam, for your work.
All right, then with that, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
To approve.
So moved, or seconded.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Mayor Fortemmo Roscoe. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or non-motion, curious if the consent agenda is adopted. Item 14 is a presentation to discussion of the status of the storm drainage and stormwater master plan update. Ms. Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight to get your input on the first citywide storm drainage and stormwater master plan update currently in progress. And you have all of the background information and project status detailed in the staff report, so rather than reiterate all of that, I'd like to focus my presentation on the, those items for which we actually need your direction. Did I, there we go. Perfect. So the first topic is hydro modification. And this particular graphic demonstrates and defines what hydro modification is, which is the change in runoff volume characteristics between pre-development and post-development. So the relative sizes of the blue arrows indicate the quantity and flow direction of surface runoff, infiltration, and groundwater recharge. The overarching concept here is just that as impervious surfaces are added to the land, and those impervious surface being rooftops, parking lots, roadways, as those are added to the land, less water infiltrates and more runs off. So hydro modification has been regulated by the state since 2015 through the city's municipal separate storm sewer system permit, which is our MS4 permit. It applies to all public and private projects which create or replace one acre or more of impervious surface. So for the city, that would include projects like the corp yard that we want to do. So what does that mean for developers? Project developers must first calculate the difference between their pre-development runoff and their post-development flows, and make sure that after construction, the runoff coming off of their site does not exceed the pre-development flows. So that's typically done through low-impact development or LID techniques such as onsite detention basins and vegetated swales and other techniques of that sort. This can make the project more expensive primarily because these techniques use up developable land for those techniques and require regular maintenance. So the basis for hydro modification regulation is to mitigate for bank and bed erosion in the receiving streams where the runoff ends up. The city's MS4 permit includes a provision for approval of a hydro modification alternate as long as that ensures no bank or bed erosion. However, in looking at other MS4 permits for, say, some larger Bay Area cities, their MS4 allows for an exemption from hydro modification for projects which drain to a concrete-lined or tidally influenced channels. So additional research has uncovered that there's a, there's a group of municipalities called the Sacramento Storm Water Quality Partnership, which includes the County of Sacramento and the cities of Sacramento, Citrus Heights, Elk Grove, Folsom, Rancho Huadova, and Galt. And they have produced a hydro modification management plan, which has been reviewed and approved by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And in it, projects that are just over 2,000 acres, which discharge the Sacramento River, are exempt from hydro modification requirements. Through a specific type of modeling, it was shown that discharges of such a small project have essentially no effect on the flow of the overall river. That is, they have very little likelihood of bank or bed erosion. So there is a precedent within the Central Valley for a hydro modification exemption, although the partnership itself approached it from a different perspective. So all of our runoff ends up in a tidally influenced channel, whether that is the Sacramento River, the Yolo Bypass, or the Deepwater Channel. So based on that, staff and our consultant believe that we have a high probability of success in obtaining a hydro modification exemption from the regional board. It would just take some staff time and resources between staff and our consultant to gather the information into a package, submit that, ask for a meeting, and follow that through with any other reports or, or meetings that might be necessary for that. Next one. Oh, next one. Sorry, keep going. Go ahead. Yep, there we go. The next topic is imperviousness assumptions. There typically exists a correlation between a particular land use and a lumped imperviousness percentage that accounts for all anticipated impervious surfaces on a gross acre basis. So for instance, we look at a low-density land use, and we say, okay, well, there's going to be a rooftop and a driveway and patio and whatever, and that's going to equal X percent, 30% or whatever it is. Modeling uses various assumptions, including the imperviousness percentage, to predict runoff and size facilities appropriately to avoid potential flooding. So it's very important that we don't overestimate or underestimate those assumptions. Overestimating could lead to overly large facilities that have higher maintenance and, and replacement costs, whereas underestimating could equal inadequate facilities so that even after you built it, you would still see potential flooding. So on the left in this slide here is an excerpt from the current city standard specifications, which defines the imperviousness percentage by land use. And you'll see that I have highlighted the low and medium-density residential uses, and those are set at 30% and 40% respectively, meaning that during design, low-density land use areas should be assumed to be, to include 30% impervious surface. For the existing condition modeling, we needed to check whether that was accurate or not. So our consultant conducted a desktop analysis of several representative areas of low and medium-density land uses to check the constructed condition against the published values. And these, this slide shows the sampled areas within the North Area and South Port. The pink areas represent the low-density sampling, and the gray areas represent the medium-density sampling areas. So you'll note that there's two of each in the North Area and five of each in South And then these are the results of the imperviousness analysis. You note that the imperviousness percentages for all areas sampled are higher than the published values of 30% for low and 40% for medium. So our consultant has adjusted that we use one percentage value for low density and one percentage for medium density as a composite of the North Area and South Port. And they suggest adding 25% to our published values. We would end up with 55% for low density and 65% for medium density. But we actually have a few other options. We could use separate values for North Area versus South Port, especially since we will actually have two separate models, one for North Area and one for South Port. So we could easily have separate values for the existing condition as well. We could also sample a couple more areas for the North Area to, just to make sure that we actually get a representative composite for that. So the existing condition is relatively easy to account for since you have something to compare to, but the future condition relies solely on the assumptions that you put into the model, including the imperviousness percentage. So with regard to low and medium-density uses for the future condition, those options are, are almost the same as the existing condition with some different consequences. So we could assume that the future development will build out at the same percentages as it has been to date, and we would then suggest the 55% for low and 65% for medium, or whatever we end up with, whatever we decide on, either as a composite citywide value or separate values for North and South. We could use the published values of 30% and 40%, or some percentage in the middle. If we decide to use some lesser value than what existing condition is building out at, we may need to institute future policies or regulations that cap the amount of impervious surface for those certain areas. But that option may be more palatable than oversizing facilities and constructing larger drainage- drainage facilities that are more expensive to maintain and repair. During the 2035 general plan update, four new land uses were added to our list, those including medium-high-density residential, central business district, corridor mixed use, and neighborhood mixed use. And since they're new land uses, we now have to come up with an imperviousness percentage for them that we didn't have before. The caveat is that a single imperviousness percentage needs to reflect the varied uses that might develop in that particular land use. So the medium-high-density residential land use includes single-family and multifamily uses between 12 and 20 dwelling units per acre. Since our suggestion for medium density is to bump it up to 65%, and high-density residential is already set at 70%, we're suggesting 68% right there in the middle. For central business district and corridor mixed use designations, we suggest setting those equal to 90%, which is the published value for all commercial, office, and business park, since those categories reflect what type of construction we expect to see in the central business district and the corridor mixed use areas. So neighborhood mixed use is just a tad more complicated, given its wide range of uses that are available, but the neighborhood commercials set it 90%. Our suggested value for medium-high and/or high residential is up around 68 or 70%. So we're suggesting 80% right about there in the middle for neighborhood mixed use. This table here on the left now is just a restatement of that published imperviousness values, except that I've added in the new land uses and their suggested values. You'll notice I also changed the low and medium density to reflect our suggested 55% and 65%. The point here is to show you how they would fit into that table and that they're still comparable to the published values. So as noted in the staff report, our consultant is still compiling information to run the models for both the North Area and the South Port. And I know this figure and the next figure are relatively small, so hopefully you have a hard copy of those that you can refer to if you need to. I chose this particular figure as a representative of the North Area modeling, particularly because it shows you the wide variety of predicted flooding depths. So this is showing you the east portion of the Causeway and Race Track Shed, which is what we're calling it. You'll see the freeway runs east-west through it. You can kind of see Rayleigh Field there over near the river, and you can get your bearings there. So the colored dots indicate the predicted flooding depth. This is for the existing condition during a 100-year, 24-hour storm. That's our design storm. The blue and green dots represent no flooding or minimal flooding within the right-ofways, and yellow dots show areas that might flood up to 1.6 feet. Areas with orange and red dots may experience significant flooding, and these are the areas that we will focus on as we discuss how to mitigate the potential flooding situations. And this might include adding pipes, increasing pipe sizes, widening channels where possible, rerouting flows. We have a lot of options there. So in general, South Port's in fairly good shape, primarily because the majority of infrastructure is newer, and it has been well-planned through the South Port Drainage Master Plan to meet the needs of the area as it continues to develop. So this figure shows predicted flooding from the existing condition, 100-year, 24-hour storm in the northeastern quadrant of South Port, currently called MC10 Basin. So on this one, you'll see the empty land up at the top is Stone Lock, and you should be able to notice Jefferson Boulevard and the Clarksburg Branch Line Trail, Lake Washington Boulevard running east and west through there. So in this area, again, we're specifically interested in the orange dots and triangles that may indicate flooding or overtopping of the channel or basin. And so we'll need to find a way to mitigate for the MC10 Basin overtopping. This might include adding additional storage along the south side of Lake Washington Boulevard. And since Stone Lock is also meant to discharge to the MC10 Basin, we'll need to work with that development to provide as much onsite storage and infiltration as possible. So the two previous exhibits, this one and the one before it, were generated again for the existing condition, assuming that the composite impervious percentages are 55% for low and 65% for medium density. Although that's the recommendation from staff and our consultant, we realize that there are actually policy considerations that could be made which could change those assumptions and therefore change the modeling results, especially for the future condition. And what I'm talking about is those impervious percentages. They could definitely affect the results that we come out with, and that's one of the reasons for bringing this to you tonight. So let's go through. So with this master plan, we expect to generate a list of improvement projects to address deficiencies in the system and/or support new development, much like the lists of improvements that are generated in the sewer and water master plans. Once the South Port project list is developed, we'll start a financing study that will be undertaken to update the South Port Drainage Impact Fee and to pay for certain improvements which will benefit those South Port developments. That will be applicable to new South Port developments only. Any development which already has a vesting map or is under construction would not be subject to the new fee. The financing study will also look at the entire list of projects and recommend some options for funding of the improvements as well as ongoing O and M. So I know this is all a lot to take in, so I've put together a summary list of the items that we are seeking direction on, and I'll leave that up to refer to. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have before weighing in on any of these items.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Are there questions at this point? Mr. Deesma?
I'll start. Thank you very much for this. I was actually really thankful you took the time to go through this when I reviewed this. This isn't, I'm not the engineer in the group, and...
Who is?
Please, one of you stand up. And but this is incredibly important work, right? When you think about how we manage flood risk in this, in any city, this is the one that's kind of overlooked, I think. I think I heard even Mayor Buttigieg, when this up in one of his speeches recently, like he wants to get into stormwater drainage systems.
Right.
This is critical. And in fact, I recall, as you were talking through it, I was thinking about the importance of it. When the hurricane hit Houston, that was their critical rainfall assumption. And there were subsequent articles and studies that talked about, and then there were talked earlier about sustainable growth and, they had a big push outward, from what I understand, in terms of their growth. And they did not plan for that stormwater drainage very well, which caused a large degree of flooding. So it isn't always, you know, which we often think of because we're surrounded by levees as the catastrophic flooding comes from, levee system breakdown. This is actually where Houston failed, is that they did not have the proper infrastructure for stormwater drainage. So I'm just kind of underscoring this, and I appreciate the lesson that this has given to. I'm not sure I have all the policy, the answers to your policy questions around it, so I might dig in a little more around it. But just really want to underscore the great job you did trying to explain it to us. I'm sure I might need some coaching around it, because it is hugely complex, because in the end, I think what you're asking us is, how do we peg our imperviousness percentage in our hydro model? Because that will, A, make sure we have the right mitigation, but it has huge implications to my perspective from how do we fund that work? And then it brings up an issue, because you talked about the percentages based on land use designations. But the dimension I'm thinking about is there's parts of our city that would benefit immediately that haven't. South Port is hugely prepared, largely prepared, because of its new and it's been able to manage it, but there's parts of our city that aren't. And how are we gonna, what's coming to my mind is how do we build a model that allows us to scale it right, but also get the funding we need to where it needs it the most, which is those areas? And I'm not quite sure how the, what the answer is to that, or how we solve that rubric. So maybe you can, am I thinking about that the right way in terms of how we're, because I'm really, I just made a note to myself, I'm just really worried that out of this, we're gonna, A, we're gonna increase our cost, because you're improving, you're suggesting that we need to right-size our imperviousness scale, correct?
Yes. I'm suggesting that we do need to right-size future infrastructure. What I'm more concerned about is making sure that our existing infrastructure has the right capacity, or if it needs repair, that we have the ability to do that. One thing I would say is that, a reminder that this drainage master plan is really looking at the entire drainage system. We're not only focusing on city facilities. Unlike the sewer and water systems, the drainage system has portions that are owned and operated and maintained by multiple entities, not only the city, but RD900, RD537, the school district, Caltrans. And so early on, we said, no, we need to look at this as a composite, as an integrated whole. If this determines during modeling that some of the items that come up on the list that need to be fixed are not city-owned, then we're going to have to work with our drainage partners to figure out how that happens, what needs to happen, and who does it, and who funds it, and so it's even more complicated.
My mind is just kind of melting right now. I love the complexity of this.
Sorry.
But yeah, and I figured there were some of that, especially on the RDs, but I did not think about the school district or any other entities that kind of manage their own or own their own system.
Yeah.
So again, I'm kind of looking at your, so on your, so let me just go through your policy questions if I can. Because I'm still not connecting the dots. So asking for the hydro modification exemption, which seems like something we should do, I'm still not clear on connecting the dot, because if you're imperative for us, you're proposing to us, let's get the system right, which I would agree with, right-sized. How is getting exempt from the hydro modification then to that point?
The hydro modification exemption is not so much about the drainage system itself. The hydro modification exemption is more looking toward development and, you know, helping out our developers and ourselves by putting that developable land to the best use. And if others have already gotten an exemption for that, then we don't see the need of the city using up developable land to provide for hydro modification that's not required. So it's really separate from the drainage system itself.
Okay.
It's just something that looked to us to be low-hanging fruit, that we could potentially get that hydro modification exemption.
Okay. So then back to, then kind of, you were asking about the imperviousness percentage.
Mm-hmm.
And I think if I heard you right, you're actually looking at, because you had in your staff report, kind of broken out by north-south and kind of pegged areas, but you ended up with a composite. Is that a true statement based on the land use?
Our consultant has suggested that we have one composite value for low density and one composite value for medium density, kind of looking at North Area and South Port and averaging them together. But we don't need to do that. We'll have two separate models anyway, so if we think that North Area existing development is somewhat different than existing impervious development in South Port, then maybe it's a better idea to have separate values. That's what we were getting at with the composite value versus separate North and South values. I'm not sure that we would know whether that's a good idea or not without a little more, a little more sampling in the North Area to make sure that we're getting a good representative composite.
Okay.
You have something? I'm just, I'm going to jump in a little bit, because I've done a lot of work in this space as a member of the Regional Water Board, and I feel like the problem, the challenge is actually much worse and more fundamental. So just for some, you know, for some background, and as far as even when you get hydro modification, I want to engage in this a little bit more. I mean, there's the, just the volume of water in a storm event that we're addressing in both of these items. With respect to the MS4 permit, there's also what's in the water ultimately that also matters, right? So it's not simply like how much, but also, you know, the discharge of pollutants and the things that you deal with at Regional San and that you've dealt with and all the water agencies that we're a member of matter to. And all of this was in the context of the Prop 218 rules that really don't give us very many viable ways of financing stormwater infrastructure or services, unlike sewer and water, where there's a specific user, you know, you own the house on 15th Street and you get sewer service and it's going to cost us much. We have very limited capacity, virtually none, other than development impact fees, which are untested and which we have, development impact fees create their own problems. We don't have the mechanism to say, there's this much water running off of my two-feet yard, and you have some other amount, and we're going to collect, we're going to collect a fee on your monthly bill for sewer and water for that runoff of water, or for the cleaning of that water to the extent that it ultimately makes its way to a regulated water body, which is pretty much all water bodies. So at the core of this is a, there are flooding and environmental issues and a massive, massive financial problem, a massive one. And we're not the only one, and there's been an enormous amount of litigation about this issue, because essentially the federal government started getting, wanted to regulate this work, all of this under the Clean Water Act, which is a sensible policy objective, but both, and the state governments pushed that down to, through the permits through the water boards, but nobody has funded it except for, you know, a little grant here and a little grant there for a demonstration project. So just, you know, to put the bigger fiscal question on this, if you had to do a stress test going forward for the city, not just city government, for the city, this is a significant one. The other dimension of it on the pollution side, and one reason why I'm not absolutely convinced on the hydro modification exemption, is that we are definitely moving to a point where any of these concrete channels or other things that lead to a designated water body, the Delta, the Ship Channel, the river, we are responsible for its contents and will be required to clean it to the point of drinkability and swimability. That is the arc of where these policies are heading, in which some of the MS4 permits are already starting to happen. And so the extent to which we bank all our future on the idea that, well, you know, people should, it should be fine if we pave and put asphalt and concrete over every surface because we'll be able to be exempt under the channel, the hydro modification channel exemption, I think could end up being a fool's bargain, to the extent to which we drive all this water, which is polluted, you know, from fertilizer on the lawn, oil on the street, God knows what else, where we then become the responsible party for the cleaning of that to drinkable and... the cleaning of that to drinkable and swimable standards, which is way harder to clean that than it is to clean the water that's coming out of the river for drinking and for swimming. So I just want, I want to be careful about just diving into this thinking we can solve it and allow developers to pave over everything in the city just because we think we might be able to get an exemption. I certainly don't, I'm certainly not that excited about an exemption for a 2,000-acre development project that would allow them to, you know, to pave over 60% of the, of the land. They should be doing, you know, the, the kinds of, of stormwater capture, you know, through natural features and stuff that we have promoted. We should be requiring that as a matter of both flood and environmental responsibility. And so I wouldn't want to get an exemption for a project of that scale. So, so I don't have a conclusion on that one, but I would not rush to judgment. It sounds good, but I, but I think there are some potential consequences that we need to be careful about going forward on the environmental regulation side. I mean, just as an aside, this is the reason why we got out of the sewer treatment business in the first place. Is we, these regulations change every five minutes and they only get harder. And we decided as a city, we couldn't keep up, so we're just gonna ship our sewage to El Grove and let them clean it. And it's worked out really well for us, but we can't do that with stormwater. So, on the hydro modification, because I just, I want to just raise a yellow flag about it, that it's, I'm interested in you, like bringing back the options around it, but I'm not, I want to understand better what its potential implications are as the water boards and EPA move, you know, slowly or not so slowly towards directly regulating and starting to treat those channels more and more and more as point sources for which we are responsible for all of the contents. We are the reclamation districts. So, so that's kind of what I wanted to leave out on the, on the hydro, the hydro modification piece. The other piece is not really, I mean, the, the challenge is, among many, is that there isn't, there isn't the funding other than impact fees for much of the infrastructure. We don't have any other funding source really. And on the maintenance and operations, we don't have much either. We, I mean, they're to some extent through the, you know, through a couple of the channels, the reclamation districts. But the biggest challenge here is in Maintenance Area Four.
Mm-hmm.
The part of the city, the big part of the city, the poorest part of the city, the part where the city with the oldest infrastructure that's not in a reclamation district. And so they are left, they are left all out on their own. So it doesn't solve our problem. So on both the capital and the maintenance side, we're, we're significantly exposed. And so getting it right is both getting it right for the purpose of managing the storm events, but also understanding how are we gonna, how are we going to pay for it? And if what comes back by these changes that we make are development impact fees on the stormwater side that are, that make development utterly, utterly, you know, uneconomic, then that's not gonna work either. And so I'm trying to understand what, like, if we say, if we do a single composite for both Southport and the rest of the city, what ultimately are the implications of that for differences in things like storm drain, stormwater impact fees between those two parts of the city? Because that, because that's one of our, it's not a major problem in Southport in terms of our, the impact fee packages. Yep, we get the complaints from developers, that's just what they do. It's like a barking dog, that's just what, developers will complain about the impact fees. But in the, in the north area of the city, it's a real, it's, it is a absolutely existential challenge to some of the, some of the development that the community most wants to see happen is endangered by those impact fees. So you're getting them exactly right and not having the north area subsidize the Southport property developers is important in that, in that piece. So I'm not sure what the, what the right answer is in that piece, but to me, that's one of the key policy, the key policy pieces in here. And I think just in general, you know, imperviousness, I, I would prefer, if there are other ways than, than just the general land use designations, to have more, more discrete policies, you know, and so that they aren't necessarily just assigned to the zoning. But if, you know, if, you know, waterfront mixed use or CBD are really that, well, they are that broad in terms, as you've described, your challenges and engineers, well, I have to put a value on this. And it could be, it could be a park, it could be a Chihuahua, you know, dog, dog calisthenics area, or it could be a parking lot, and I have to figure that out as an engineer to make these, these assumptions. And rather than like averaging it out and we don't even know what it's gonna be, I mean, if there's a way for us to get more discreet in the way that we regulate as well, or getting better, getting different forecasts from planning and economic development, I don't know, but I, I feel, it feels frustrating and not very intellectually sound to be, to be just assigning, you know, an average of averages of averages of averages to those major land use categories. Because, and the other reason is that, and you brought this up several times, kind of as an aside, but maybe as a, as a hint to us, which is that we should have better policies on this. In addition, right? So in addition to what are the impervious percentages, there, we should have policies about, you know, for this kind of project, here's the limit on how much imperviousness you can, you can create. And maybe there's an appeal procedure or, you know, some other thing based on conditions and other sorts of things. But we should be starting to drive using our other policy tools, other than just building more detention basins and widening the channels and everything else, to try to drive down the amount of, of storm drain water that we have to deal with in a, in a storm event as part of this. So you mentioned a couple of areas where that, you know, that, that might be possible, and I think those are worth pursuing on the planning side of the equation and, as, as well. And we've seen plenty, you know, in the, in the bridge district work that Katie Jacobson was working on with some of those developers, and they came forward with a bunch of other alternatives that, you know, engineers have never seen before. And they, these, some of these things, some of these innovations have created other kinds of value in the community, in addition to being better storm drainage as well. They've created other open space or other options as well. So, so I don't, I can't give a yes, no, or numerical answer to any of the four key questions that you have before us, but I do think getting more discreet on the, on the, on the impervious value, imperviousness values and understanding the relationship to then what, what the master plan will look like in terms of total cost.
Mm-hmm.
And that, what that will mean for, for, for the impacts to, to development and to the, the maintenance costs, the operation costs of that, that either we and/or the reclamation districts have to bear, is an important part of figuring, of allowing us to give you better feedback on two, three, and four. And then, as I said, number one, I'm, I'm interested, but I, but I'm not ready to sign on the dotted line yet. And I, and I suspect, at least for me, that a, that a narrower, narrower application of a hydro modification exemption would be appropriate as well, if we were to go down that route.
Yeah.
And I'd be happy to, if we go down that route, and I'm happy to help. I mean, I've been a member of that board, and, you know, I have a good relationship with the staff of the board, so, so please call on me if we, if we get to that stage to, to help in the negotiations and the advocacy. So.
Okay.
And I don't know whether people want to speak, thank you for the, and the, and the context, because in short, you, you raised what I was getting to, was that the rubric is actually more, could be more complex because of those issues you brought up, which is kind of where I was leaning, was because of the, where the, the financing comes in. How do you even finance all this? Ultimately comes down to several other areas we need to consider, and maybe we should. So I appreciate your comments on that.
Questions or comments? Councilmember Gero?
Yes. First of all, thank you very much for your background, Mayor Cavaldin. It's very helpful to, you know, try to get the combination of all these other factors. And I, like Chris, was like really focused on all the details and going over it several times, trying to understand it, doing some research online as well, and reading reports so that I can, you know, get a good understanding. But in, you know, and when I looked at an exemption, you know, seeking an exemption, I, like Chris, was like, is, you know, is that a good thing? Or, you know, where are we at on that? And, and the impact this would have on future development? And, you know, what, just can, I, I heard what the mayor said, I think it's really helpful to know, but what other situations could arise out of that, that, you know, if we were seeking that exemption? And we could explore it, you know, I was just exploring it, but I do want to know a little more about the impact this would have.
Well, just to, just to point out, and, and thank you again, you know, for saying it as well, there is a difference between hydro modification and treatment. So projects may have to do onsite basins or filter planters or, or some other LID technique to deal with their treatment requirement. Again, you know, the hydro modification deals just with the volume of water coming off the property, but there are still treatment requirements where you can't put those pollutants out in the system. So they, projects have to look at both of those sides.
Okay.
And so in, in certain instances, a hydro modification may not help a property as much because they would still have to do LID techniques to deal with the treatment.
I see.
So there is that.
Okay. So then I think what you were mentioning is, you know, not having so much concrete, but adding in other amenities so that it can address the treatment? Is that, so like I can understand that? Is that how that would look like?
Yes. So, like I said, you know, a development, say a commercial development, regardless whether they had the hydro modification exemption or not, will probably end up with filter planters and/or, you know, an active filter system, you know, some other, there's stormwater requirements anyway.
Okay. So I, I do think in looking at future developments, we, we should take that into consideration. I think that's real important to include. So whether, you know, an exemption prevents that from happening, you know, I might not be supportive of that, but if, if, if it is helping us to, you know, whatever it is to help us achieve that goal, so for future developments, we do incorporate that. I'm not as familiar with, you know, as the mayor mentioned, all the different policy changes that go on and the impact this has and could have financially on the city. So, you know, I'm just gonna rely on the mayor's word on, you know, we don't want to, you know, rely on this too much in moving forward and, you know, be careful of the cost as well. And on looking, on, on the percentages that you had for the modeling, this is something, I've been hearing your presentation supportive of the recommendations you do have, only because I, I trust your judgment on this. I, I don't have the background, but I think your judgment on looking at the variations and finding somewhere in between. And then also considering making sure that, you know, moving forward, we have a plan in place so, for future development, so we have an idea on, on what we need to expect in continuing building out. And so that's, and federal funding, there's no option for federal funding? That, that isn't like Mission Impossible, is, can we?
Not really.
I haven't seen very many, there's really no grants. There's just, yeah.
I mean, after all the floods and, you know, nobody, I mean, so we get our levy improvement, you know, you know, federally subsidized. So is there something we can do about that? You know, maybe the next president, oh my god.
I think that, you know, it's, it seems that a lot of the flooding talk has focused on levies.
Right.
And levy breaches and, and other problems related to that. And, and we are well on our way to, you know, making sure that that's not the source of any flooding for us.
Right.
But, you know, I would put it out there that we are probably a lot more likely to have localized flooding based on the internal drainage system than we are to have any breaks or levy issues which result in flooding.
Mm-hmm.
And yet, there's not really anybody talking about that. There's not really any, you know, federal or state money out there to deal with that. And, you know, West Sacramento, just the way that it grew up, you know, with, it's pretty much a mishmash of different pipe sizes and pipe, you know, materials and elevations, and especially for the north area. So even if we wanted to go do a detention basin in the north area, where are you gonna put it?
Where are you gonna put it?
It's pretty much built out. So I said, I think that's our, that's our concern and our, our cross to bear about, you know, fixing the system.
Mm-hmm. And I agree.
All right. Councilmember Sandeep?
I, I think we all learned a lot through this, through the presentation and through the staff report. And I, I don't know that I have anything new to add. My, my questions were things like, when I, when I was reading this, were there any downsides to asking for the exemption? So it sounds like that's what we're kind of, we're kind of grappling with, with that, what, what those might be. And then I was persuaded during, in the Southport about the extra sampling that might be needed in the north, although as the conversation's going on, I think there is such, such variability potentially within projects. It is hard, I, I understand the modeling, we need to have perhaps one number to, to run through a model, it may, may make it easier, but it may not be the reality. So I think kind of struggling with that a bit. So I, I, again, I, I learned a lot about terms that I wasn't familiar with, hydro modification and imperviousness. But I, and I, I do think it's a, it's a real issue. I think, I think a gut would say, gosh, we need to overbuild the, we need to build the Taj Mahal, but there's obviously funding issues. And then it, it may not make sense in the, obviously in the long run, because we may not have resources to keep that up. So what is, where, where do we land here? I think that's, that's the big question. So I, obviously, we're, we're giving you some, I'm giving you some, some of my, what I'm struggling with here, but I think we'll need to obviously get in, get more information back from you, particularly with regard to, for me, the big issue is the funding. If we come up with solutions and then it's a dead end, I, I don't, I don't really want to go there. I want to come up with something that we can do. And if that's, if that's creating a responsibility of an infill projects or new projects, we could probably manage, but I, I think we've got a really, we're struggling with what to do with older, older systems. So.
And part of our challenge is the older, the older system is not, has no funding source because it's not in, it's not, because of our fractured system of independent reclamation districts, there's no, there is no assessment, there's no, there's no investment that gets made in, in, in Broderick and the central city of, of West Sacramento. So it's, on the operational side in particular, it's, it's, it's not a trivial, it's not a trivial issue. Now, hydro modification, I think that, I mean, there's the current regulatory regime, but then there's, you know, if, if through a modification like this, you know, the amount of, the amount of stormwater that we are directing into the river, into the Ship Channel, you know, doubles because we are allowing for all of this impervious development, even, even if there's no additional pollution going in because of all these other requirements that are on the individuals, which there would be because more water will reach streets and other places that there is no, there is no project in. But even if there isn't, the, the regulatory, the pressure on regulators to say, okay, you know, we're calling your bluff. We're now, we are going to now require, since it's such a major source of stormwater into the river, you are as a city, and you're not regulating it. You're not, you're not, you're, you're, in fact, you're going in the opposite direction towards more imperviousness as opposed to the, you know, the, kind of the goal that we've been trying to achieve as a state for, for the last while. They're gonna come after, not specifically, but cities generally, and they are, is already significant interest in doing that. And just the cost of having a, a stormwater treatment plant, you know, at each of the, at the outflows to the river and to the, to the, to the Ship Channel would be astronomical. Because you're not, you're not just cleaning for stuff that's in the water. Now you're cleaning for every pollutant that ever happens in the city in that stormwater. So it's, it is worth doing everything possible to avoid that fate. It may not be possible to avoid it, but it's worth doing everything possible to avoid it. And so I wouldn't want to, in the name of giving, you know, some big property developer in Southport who wants to build a 2,000-acre project, the chance to put more pavement down, I would not want to do that and risk having to have, to pay for, you know, a treatment plant at the, at the end of the, at the end of one of the drainage canals five years from now. So that's, that's the issue I was trying to raise.
One of the other things I would point out is that, you know, we, this is a very, very first time that the north area has ever been modeled for drainage. We've, we had a lot of brain damage to go out and try to figure out what was out there, what condition it was in, how does the system work, which way does it drain? So my point is that, this is just the first blush. We're only looking at pipes that are 21-inch and larger because to take on the entire system the first time is just not possible. In future modeling runs, as we update the drainage master plan, we can start to look at smaller and smaller pipe sizes. We can drill in a little bit more because whatever list we come up with is not going to be fixed in five or 10 years anyway. It's gonna be a minimum 20-plus-year project, just like our water and sewer project lists are. So we do have the ability to clarify as we go along.
All right. Mr. Mantri, you have sufficient direction?
I think we do. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Wendy. All right. We're gonna proceed to the next item 15, which is consideration of Resolution 19-23 approving the 2019 Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan and Related Actions. And welcome Director Michael. This is the, this is the, essentially the compilation of a lot of actions that the council has already taken. This isn't, this is definitely not a de novo or first blush look at the master plan. And this is all of the financing and environmental work and everything else coming together at the very last stage of the process, as opposed to invitation tonight for us to rewrite the Parks and Recreation Master Plan in real time. But it's an enormous amount of work and community engagement and thought and, you know, sophisticated modeling and financing strategies have gone into this. And so we're, I think we're all excited to bring it across the line, so.
Thank you. And that was my opening.
Thank you. And that was my opening. I am pleased to be presenting to you this evening the 2019 Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan. You received a 186-page document, and I have slides for you as well. But this really is almost a two-year culmination of, that's resulted in a number of stakeholder meetings, workshops in the community with our Parks Recreation Intergenerational Services Commission at council. It's also included an ongoing effort of an interdepartmental staff that's been very committed to this process and focused on making sure the information in the document is relevant and integrates all of the planning work that's being done throughout the city, both that's been completed and that's underway. And it also includes planning and funding strategies that will create a roadmap for us to identify and prioritize projects as we move forward to grow our parks and recreation system. So as I mentioned, a lot of the information in the plan has already been workshopped with you. So I'm not going to spend much time on that at all. I just wanted to touch on those items that we haven't yet workshopped with the council that are part of the plan. Next one. Thank you. So we did extensive survey work, data collection. We looked at our prioritized community needs, levels of service analysis, which is really promising because we have a current deficit based on the general plan targets of five acres of parkland per thousand residents. But if we add in all of the plan but not yet bulk part land, not including potential new opportunities with the school district, we come really close to hitting those targets. If we add in some additional opportunities with the school district, we will meet those targets. And then in December, more recently, we shared with you our initial draft capital improvement program and funding strategies. And that's where I want to pick up from. Next slide. Next one. Okay, so we identified projects and organized them into three buckets, three categories. Bucket one is our sustainable projects. That's life cycle replacement. Bucket number two, our expanded services. Those are enhancements we can make to our existing park facilities to extend recreation opportunities. And then bucket number three are our visionary projects, like the previous slide that shows the re-envisioned Central Park, one of the really exciting pieces of this plan, its new park development or major renovations of existing parks, like the Bright Park master plan implementation. And developing these buckets, we made sure that the projects, the plan that we put in place was financially viable, integrates the other related planning efforts, and that includes projects that are likely to be implemented in the next 10 years. So it doesn't include all of the new park development in Washington or all of the park development left in the Bridge District or Yarborough or River Park. It's what we think might come online in 10 years. Next slide, please. So this is just a chart that breaks down the total CIP costs per those three buckets. There's a detailed list in the plan on each of those categories. It's just kind of interesting that back in 2003, the CIP was also valued at $179 million. So that, in today's dollars, that would be worth about $244 million. So we think that we've put together a reasonable CIP portfolio that focuses on maintaining our existing system, but also pursues some really exciting new projects. Next slide, please. This is just another breakdown of that CIP by project type. And over time, the general plan 2035 document calls for a master plan update every 10 years with more focus spent on the first five years because there's just more certainty in the development and construction community. So I'm going to touch on what we, what we are planning for the next five years. But what this shows is that the bulk of the work is really coming in the latter half of the 10-year plan. And that's because that's when a lot of the new park development in Southport is going to be coming online. Next slide, please. So immediate projects, over the next five years, most of these are already underway. We have for existing park improvements, life cycle replacement projects, the Memorial Park ADA upgrades, those we should have bids opening in another month or two. The Bright Park ADA upgrades, which are also required as part of the ADA litigation by 2023, as well as completing the balance of the master plan improvements. The Barge Canal recreational access area improvements, those are also underway right now. And hopefully, design and completion of additional features in Heritage Jokes Park. Once the Ropes course opens up, it'd be nice to continue to make improvements there. And other grant-driven park improvements. For trail improvements, we have the Sycamore Trail, Phases Two and Three, the Southport Levy Trailhead Construction. We have an application for grant funding right now for that project. Continuing to explore opportunities to enhance and expand the Clarkspur Branch Line Trail and the Riverwalk Trail North Construction, which that's also going to be starting this summer. Next slide. For new park development, Bees Lakes Habitat Restoration Study is underway, and we think that's going to position us for additional grant funding to make some improvements for public access and maybe passive recreation. Washington Unified School District Partnership Opportunities and other grant-driven park development. And it's important to note that a lot of the Prop 68 grant programs that are funded and being made available right now really dictate where we might want to target sites. We've always thought Bright Park would be the best candidate for the largest grant program that's out right now. It looks like it's not eligible based on the median income requirements. So those types of decisions with the grant funding that's available will help drive where we prioritize some of those new park development opportunities. And then we have current facility improvements. Our Rec Center debt service is going to be an ongoing obligation for the duration of this 10-year plan. And then we have some minor improvements at the community center, at the boathouse, and Club West. And then we hope within the five-year period, we have an opportunity to seek grant funding to move forward with an urban forest management plan. Next slide. So our funding strategy that we shared in December was to develop the CIP at $179 million and then identify other funding sources that can contribute to the park CIP. And then the result, resulting balance is what would be needed to be funded from the park impact fee. Next slide. Also, in December, we shared with you what those other targeted funding sources were and the amounts that we were identifying as potential values coming from those sources to support the total CIP. What we didn't have at that time was a total revenue projection over 10 years for those different funding sources. So we did that. And while those numbers that you see on this table and they're also in your plan, don't, they're not fully burdened numbers, so they don't reflect all of the other project costs that other projects might want to target those funds for. It still gives us an idea of whether or not our funding assumptions fall into a reasonable range of commitment because we didn't want to overextend any one funding source. Next slide, please. So this just kind of in summary highlights the CIP by project bucket. It looks at $179 million total portfolio, $144.5 million potentially coming from those other funding sources. And then we estimated the park impact fee revenue over the next 10 years at $35.5 million. And right now, we've targeted about $30 million of the park impact fee funding to go towards projects. That gives us a little bit of wiggle room in case we don't receive some grant funding or some of those other funding sources don't materialize. We do show an unfunded balance right now of $4.5 million in bucket number one, which is the sustainable projects category. Those are projects that typically cannot be funded through park impact fees. And so while we do have that, that funding gap, we think that over time, we can work to fill that gap by exploring additional volunteer and partnership opportunities. The Bear Crop Science Community Service Day is a great example of how we can pull the community in to help us with maintenance and improvements of our existing parks. We have an opportunity coming up with Habitat for Humanity in one of our parks. So we recognize there's that gap there, but we feel that it's still, we can still work with that in our total funding strategy. Next slide. So we have our 10-year CIP, the total amount, some unfunded balances. We've targeted 83% of the funding for the CIP to come from other funding sources. I do want to spend a few moments talking about the park impact fee. We did estimate the revenues, and we also recognize that our impact fees can be considered an impediment to development and that where there are opportunities to incentivize development, it goes a long way in making sure projects move forward. Because if we don't have projects, we don't collect any fees. So we have identified some fee credit language that we're recommending the council consider authorizing the city manager right now on an interim basis to incorporate that's already exists in some of our other impact fees. It just wasn't included in the park impact fee. And so that language authorizes fee credits for structures that were lawfully demolished within the last five years to be applied to projects on that site. Okay, so some of the new information. We completed a SEQA analysis for the Central Park portion of the plan. All of the other components in the plan were incorporated into the general plan 2035 EIR or other project-specific EIRs, but the re-envisioned Central Park was not. So we completed a SEQA analysis that looked at, next slide, please, two of the three components of the Central Park. So the Central Park has three areas, the Barge Canal Parkway, which is located between the Palmetto Sea Bridge and Jefferson Boulevard, the Stone Lock Plaza, which really focuses on celebrating the infrastructure of the lock facility, and then the Sacramento River Parkway located between the Mike McGowan Bridge and the Sacramento River. For purposes of the SEQA analysis, the Sacramento River Parkway component was not analyzed because we just didn't have enough information to study. But the other two areas were, and the conclusion was that those two portions of the Central Park are within the scope of the general plan 2035 EIR, and no new or substantially more adverse impacts would occur through implementation of a plan. Next slide, please. We also completed a park maintenance analysis. And we do have best practice maintenance standards in place, but over time, with the recession and through attrition, we have lost some staffing in our park maintenance division. And that does limit our ability to fully implement our best practice maintenance standards. We've been very resourceful in identifying creative ways through partnerships, through volunteer activities to help us with our maintenance. But as we continue to grow our park system, it's going to be really important that we grow our staffing as well to support that new development and to continue to maintain what we already have. Our annual, oh, you can go back, quick, make sure, yeah. One more back?
Yeah, one more back.
Thank you. I did want to mention that our annual operating budget also falls short a little bit. Again, through partnership and volunteer opportunities, we work really hard to fill those gaps. We are implementing a work order management system citywide, and that's going to be really important for us to be able to track our true costs of delivering our maintenance services. We can use a work order management system to track our costs against our resources, against our best practice maintenance standards. And that's going to help us to refine the funding needs that we'll need as we move forward. Okay, thank you. Also, in the plan, it identifies some emerging functions as we grow our park system. That includes trail and irrigation maintenance, which is, you know, as we build trails, we have more miles of trails. As we build more parks, we have more miles of irrigation. And we will need to focus on growing that portion. Also, just a recognition that work order management systems and a lot of the volunteer coordination and contracting that we likely need to do to support maintenance also requires resources. Thank you. So implementation strategy. I'm just going to highlight the key strategic areas. This all comes back to some of the emerging issues that we identified very early on in the process. So first is growing the park system. This includes everything from collaborating with partners to develop innovative places, to recreate, to developing a network of trails, parks, and open spaces that connect people to nature, to recreation, to schools, to places of employment, to smart design that allows us to hopefully reduce maintenance costs in some parks in order to refocus resources in other parks that have higher maintenance needs like playfields. Trails, it's all about connectivity. Parkland improvements, this is park design that promotes environmental stewardship. Placing art in parks, making sure our recreation spaces are accessible for all people of all ages. And using technology where feasible to enhance the customer experience and maybe even reduce our maintenance costs. Next slide. Then we have economic development through parks, really focusing on continued investment in features along the riverfront and in strategic locations to support new development. Athletic field development, we know we need playfields. So this points to finishing the Bright Park master plan, to working with Washington Unified School District on joint use opportunities, and also looking at our athletic field maintenance standards and partnership opportunities so that we can continue to improve the playing conditions of our athletic field system. And then recreation programming as well. We do a great job with our programming, but we recognize that there's room to grow and to make sure that the community knows about our programming. So tracking our programs, our attendance, engaging the community will help us to better manage and grow our programming. And then lastly, operations and staffing. This is really about making sure we have adequate staffing policies and procedures to manage our system. And we went through a self-assessment that's included in the plan through Capra and Michael Svetz, who's here with Prose Consulting, who can answer questions afterwards, can tell you a little bit more about Capra. But we completed a self-assessment just to see if we'd be eligible for accreditation. And based on our self-assessment, we would be. It's a very timely and a very expensive process, but going through that exercise was important because it just helps us to demonstrate organizational capacity that's required for most of the grant programs out there. And then financing the park system. We just touched on the CIP and our funding strategy, but this is about making sure that we have a long-term financially sustainable program to grow our system, to maintain our system, to look at our fees so that we might become a more self-sustaining department. Next slide. So we have some additional efforts that were underway concurrently, the landscape development guidelines. We've been working on updating those, and those should be completed shortly. We're also working on the Recreation Center Business Plan Update. We hope to finish that this spring. And then, as noted in the agenda report, we do plan to bring a park impact fee analysis resolution and the public hearing process forward, probably with a larger book of fees update because we're citywide looking at all of our fees. So we'll probably roll that in and bring that forward at that time. So that concludes my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions. And we have Michael Svetz here. We also have Jeff Townsend from Jacobs that has worked on the SEQA analysis, if there are questions pertaining to that.
All right. Are there questions from members of the council? Councilmember Guerrero?
No, are there any requests to speak? I just wanted, there, okay, good. Thank you very much for the comprehensive report. I haven't been to all the different, you know, presentations on this, so this was a significant amount for me to cover. And I appreciate all the research done and just for us to be able to identify what it is our priorities could be here in the city. I do like the idea of increasing more fields because I hear, you know, from families that they want to have more playfields for youth, you know, such as Little League and for adults as well. But also for seniors, you've incorporated the needs for the senior programming, active aging programs. So it looks like you provided a wide variety. Looking at the costs, it seems like it's going to be very expensive in the long term. And just, you know, taking into consideration all the different sources, Measure E is something I think we had been including as an idea for our trails. So for recreational purposes, Measure E does make sense. For Measure N, we didn't provide any specification. I believe City Council will take that into consideration as we review the budget on what the priorities are for Measure N, from what I understand. And it could be used, but I'm not sure. But this, that's a significant amount of money, and I'm not sure if the $36 million is over a period of 10 years. When you take a look at that amount of money, that is a line item there?
For the $36 million?
Or the 30-something million under Measure N?
Oh, oh, the total, the 10-year estimated revenue.
Is it the 10-year estimated revenue?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. But yeah, no, this was a very comprehensive, and I think that some of the priorities are well thought out. And looking forward to, you know, looking forward to an opportunity to sit down and go over this more with you as we move forward. And some of the areas, I think in Bright Park, there's definitely some, I have a question regarding the jurisdiction. Is it the school district or it is?
It is school district property. We have a joint use agreement.
Joint use agreement.
So we maintain and improve the park.
Is that, okay, good to know. So just making sure that we do all the repairs necessary, any fencing and things like that. I did see towards a certain section that you itemized what needed to get done. And could we add any more improvements if we spotted that?
Absolutely. This is really just a, it's, it's, it's our best guess at what we could be improving right now, knowing what we know about the existing facilities. We did a very extensive park-by-park analysis and then anticipated potential projects based on the community input. But it's really meant to be a guiding document. It can change. We can reprioritize projects from year to year. As we're working on our biannual budget process right now, we're folding this information into that, recognizing that as funding opportunities change, there's also an opportunity to reprioritize the projects.
And is there a possibility of looking down the road for like, like a sports recreation center in the, in the, in the north area? Some room for that and maybe in Some room for that and maybe incorporate something like that down the road?
A new sport, like a new sports complex?
New sports complex.
Well, we certainly have a need for a lot of different playfields. It would be great to consolidate them into a complex, and I think that is, that lends itself to some of the grant programs that are available.
Okay, good.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, but it's not in the, if it's not in the master plan, and I'm supportive of it too, but I also want to, we should, the point of a master plan is to be setting forth our, our planned expenditures, including grants. So I want to make sure that Councilmember Guerrero is getting a real answer. Like, if the plan doesn't include that in it, then it's not like we're going to be scouring the world for grants, and we don't have matching funds allocated from any of these sources, and that these sources are all probably beyond their actual capacity. So I just want to, I don't want to like just pass over it as though it could, it could, you know, it's a real possibility once we do the plan and if it's not.
Right. Well, for something like the sports complex, we, we have not included, we've listed in the plan potential reuse at Westmore Oaks, which could lend itself to a sports complex, but we haven't included funding for it yet. So, so if it's something that falls within the scope of what's in the master plan, even though locations might change where you place amenities, then it would be consistent with the master plan.
Okay.
What I did see, I think, in some of the ideas of what we can include for uses based on the surveys that I noticed here, it, so I was thinking maybe you could create that based on what I read in the survey, but it wasn't like specific what we would, what we would create out of that. And it's going to be something when we build out, you know, just the, the new area in the Barge Canal, we have some ideas we can incorporate in there, but we haven't identified that that's exactly what it's going to be and, you know.
We haven't, we haven't identified specific amenities in all of the new park development sites. What we've, what we've called out in the master plan is that we know there's an unmet need for specific amenities, and we did an equity mapping exercise also to identify where we have gaps in providing those amenities. So as the new parks come online, amenitizing them to meet the needs of the community based on what's in the master plan.
Okay.
And based on the funding, right?
And funding, correct.
Like, under this master plan, there's zero chance that a rec center could be replicated, you know, on Sacramento Avenue. This is what I'm trying to, I want to, we should be responsible, but the point, just like our strategic plan is to, is to guide us into, okay, here's the, here's what we're going to be doing now. This master plan is critical because it sets, it sets the impact fee, obviously, which is the central funding source in a lot of, for a lot of this work. And the impact fee cannot be just spent where, we can't spend impact fee revenues just anywhere in the city anything we want to. It has to be related in some way to the impacts. So I just, you know, the, I don't, I don't want to convey that the master plan is, is a fully elastic document that could mean anything to any person because then it's pointless.
Right.
The purpose of this is to lay out based on the massive amount of public engagement that's been done in all of the financial modeling and that's been done about what our actual intentions are for, for a program. That's my, that was my, my opinion. I don't want to, I just don't want to, I don't want to create a, the wrong impression for, for Councilmember Guerrero that, that there's more opening here than there is for a, you know, kind of a first-class sports complex that would be, you know, regional amenity and draw or whatever. It could happen, but it's not, it's not, it's not the most likely outcome given the plan that's being, that we've put together and given the funding sources that are available.
Correct. And we have project prioritization criteria that we included in the plan, and being able to build something is important, but being able to maintain it is also important. And as we know with our recreation center, we have a significant financial contribution that we need to make to that facility every year. And so part of the analysis and evaluating each project that comes forward is running it through that, that prioritization criteria and making sure that it's meeting the needs, that we can afford to build it and maintain it, and that it is fitting within the context of the plan.
And all the prior, I'm sorry to interrupt, but kind of the prioritization issue you laid out too, which was, there was an equity lens we had on this, to sort of say where it's needed, where this deficiency is needed. So to me, that's the promising part of what you did, is that it does provide a lens, and the discipline, I think, is where you're going to, kind of ensuring that, oh yeah, we, this was, this is important because although we don't see the parks every day and, or we know they're all out there, I think the number you brought back was kind of astounding, we had that many, but the deficiencies were where they are in the park and in our parks was what captured me about this, this process. Not just document, the process, which was impressive to me, was it gave me the right set of lenses that I wasn't even thinking about. So to me, that was really critical and that we hadn't seen before because it would be just sort of, you know, where there was an opportunity or where we think there's an opportunity or where we heard one constituency in our community say, we really need this over here, but we know that, you know, you know, whatever improvements, AD improvements are just critical or to these two parks at Brighton Memorial or whatever. So just really sort of, to me, I just want to acknowledge you and the staff and our friends and consultants who guided us through this process that led to this moment because it has been, for me, one of the, really, in my eight, now my, my ninth year on council, a really comprehensive, really view to sort of whittle me down to get focused what it is we're doing, what it is we want to do and, and, and plan for that is kind of, for me, is setting the right expectation for the community and one that they could understand. I remember that conversation very clearly around when we talked about how, kind of, between the visionary project and the sustainable project. It just was a clear way to talk to our neighbors around why something's a priority and why something's not, and building in, which you should do in a lot of other things, the previous stormwater one was. We need to be talking about, about every city public works or parks project in terms of not just how much to build it, how much to maintain it.
Mm-hmm.
So I think this was just a really, really well-thought, thoughtful exercise to get to, you know, we could just write a plan and say, okay, we're done, and then we can set our fees, but this was really a thoughtful process that I really appreciated. The one area I wanted to call out, if you don't mind me going, is, is kind of how you approach the funding. And, and there's, you, while there's still a lot of unfunded areas, it was a really thoughtful approach there too, looking at possible, but not over, at least not right away overshooting it. But the one part you did bring up that I, you just brought up in your presentation was what's unfunded and where we might be able to make that up because I just want to acknowledge the, the part that is, that has begun to play a really critical part in our park strategy, which is the other sources. So you brought up Bear Crop Sciences who goes out and maintains stuff, and we know other groups that are going out there to help with the parks. We had an unforeseen partner, however many years ago, when Disney Kaboom funded, or, which was a priority getting Bright A Park. The most recent one as well, and that's really gone, is West SAC Play, which has become a big part of our community. And that's, I think that's an area that we should take our cue from and can build upon, is how do we further cultivate those outside organizations? And we depend a lot, and we're going to continue to depend a lot on grant funding to get this done. But I think the area, that's an area where we can talk to our community even more about their ability to get involved in their community. How do we, and, and, and look at the other lens that you brought up in this discussion was parks as economic development. And I think if there's an opportunity at a policy level, how do you incorporate Measure N monies? I'm not saying we do or don't. It's just the area where you might. It's a policy question, is where it might help a neighborhood turn around or, or can make improvements that could generate other, the inclusive economic development we were looking at. So there might be that framework around it, but I think that's where, to me, the work in this document really, really shown in the process and how we look for it. So to me, there's other things I can go into. I'm sure other councilmembers want to talk, but it was a thoughtful process to land it. And the document itself is very clean, easy to read and understand, and kind of it lays out all the way out to implementation, which I appreciate it. So thank you for the good work, Tracy, really, really great work. Mayor Potemorosco?
Several months ago, I think we talked about the public-private partnerships, and we talked about the upper level of the I Street Bridge conversion and some of the different models out there, for example, with the High Line and how they had essentially their, their version of Bridgeway Play, but friends of the High Line. And I think what Councilmember Ledesma said is, is key. I mean, we've had all these wonderful amenities. We have one going on right now at Summerfield Park with the, with the shade structure being input now. And, and I think that these highly motivated and dedicated groups of people who really want to do something great for our community are just incredible resources. But also, I mean, as we're talking about, you know, grants and other, other means, I mean, there are efforts to partner with local businesses in our Rotary Club, and as you mentioned earlier, with Habitat for Humanity to, to work on projects in the community. I know that they really want to partner with us and get programs going here. But think about like Downtown Streets Team. I mean, there's, there's no shortage of, of work on the streets, but I mean, there's, there's nothing that precludes that team from going into parks and doing, you know, cleanup efforts. So that way, when the maintenance is ready to be done, that's not having to be addressed at the time. And Tracy, I, I appreciate, first off, you know, how responsive you are. I mean, I know you're, you know, just stepped into this position. If through my lens, every dollar should go to Little League and soccer fields because that's, I have little kids, right? And that's where I spend all my time. And a couple of weeks ago, grass was about, you know, three feet tall over at one of the parks, largely due to high rains. And, and, you know, you couldn't get out there to mow it because of the wet terrain. And I don't think that a lot of our residents understand what goes into the maintenance. We all want what we want, but, you know, it is a huge cost also to, to maintain. I just wanted to say that I know that a lot of the information here is data-driven. And, you know, we, we came back what, I don't know how long ago, and learned that walking and bike trails was at the top of the list. Who knew, right? I, I don't know that I expected that. I think based on the buzz I was hearing in the community, it would be more about ballparks, which was actually on the medium-to-low side. So anyhow, I appreciate all the thoughtful work that you put into this, breaking it down, age categories, kids, no kids, all the priorities that people, you know, that were outlined in here that provide us with an opportunity to really kind of color our and inform ourselves as we navigate through the plan. I know it was a tremendous amount of work, and we've looked at portions of this in the past, but seeing it all together is quite informative. And so thank you for your investment here.
Councilmember Sandin?
And the accolades continue. I, I think the culmination of this process really that, that started in 2017, I mean, we're finally here. It's so exciting. And I can see the, the new park programs and the, the new structures and the new opportunities ahead. So it's, to me, it's, this is a really exciting time. And it's also so important for us to have a plan and to actually think about how much things will cost, how will, how will we finance them, how is this going to happen? How, how are the work order management, like the new management system, how will that actually help us in the future? So I, I think this is really exciting for us. I think we do best, I think our sweet spot here in the city is when we have a plan and then we can take advantage of opportunities. So we need this so that when opportunities emerge or come to us, that it's actually something that we want, that the people here have spent time telling us what they want and how they want it, and we're actually able to deliver that. So I'm, I'm really excited and looking forward to now that, now that we're actually at this point of moving forward.
Some great summaries. I completely agree. I won't repeat, but it's, it really is an astonishing, I've been through several of these now, and this is a, this is by far the strongest one, and it's, and does all the things that have been said. Having said that, there are two things I wanted to change in it. Because this is not, this is not a, this, when we adopt the plan, it is the council adopted master plan for the city. It is not a letter from the city staff to the council. And, and it also needs to meet our, our needs as well. So in one area of the plan, I feel like it's not specific enough or it's misleading. And that is in its description of the funding sources. And we just had this conversation, and we had an extensive conversation when this item was before us, the funding piece before, which is because, because so many of our resident supporters, you know, have a, have a sense, an inflated sense of what is possible, that, you know, sort of if we just wake up in the morning, we can declare that a new, this new thing will happen. That isn't, the, part of the point of the document is to be, is to help any citizen understand how does this really work to the extent that they can. It's super complicated, like everything else, not, not, well, not as bad as storm drainage. It's very complicated. And so, you know, there's a discussion in here, excellent discussion that was added around the geographic dimensions, which I think is super helpful in helping somebody look at and see, okay, why are there, why are there more parks over here? You know, more improvements happening over here and not there? And why can't with that money be used? So that's, I think, great. Then you turn the page to the citywide funding sources, and I think it gets that exactly wrong, which is basically says everything else is citywide funding sources that do not have geographical restrictions and can be used to fund park improvement projects citywide. It's just not true. I mean, the, I mean, these, there's no consistent geographic limitations on these funds. But the, I mean, as you were mentioning even on Bright Park, most grant programs have an effective geographic limitation, and they definitely have a limitation. And I think, and so, you know, when, when folks ask like, well, you know, why is there more spending happening in this area? Well, state grant programs favor low-income areas, and they favor, they favor park projects that also deliver on something else like active transportation, which is why most of the things that are in the, in the five-year budget are trails, not sports centers, because sports centers will never get funded by a state, by a state grant, trails will. That's a useful thing for, you know, it's not something that would be on my top line if I was talking to a citizen at the supermarket about parks, but if they were going to read 200 pages, it should be there, right? So I feel like that page could use a bit more explanation about, these are not, these, all these other funding sources are not at the unfettered discretion of the city. The EIFD funds, yes, we can spend them throughout the district and even outside of the district to some extent, but those funds are only generated to the extent that are the investments that we make accelerate and deepen economic development, right? So we can't, so again, we can't, we're not going to spend them on a project that doesn't have some relationship to generating that development and measure, the ballot measures, which are sales tax measures, you know, similar thing. So I just think it's, TIF funds, impact fees that do have geographic restrictions as well. So I think that page could, could use a bit more, a bit more building out, so that it's more useful to a member of the public, trying to understand and make sense, and then be able to come and hold us accountable for how we're, how we're choosing to spend, spend their money. And the other, and sort of the reverse, and this is the, the stuff that I think starts in the Parks Maintenance Assessment portion on page 136, we often deal with this, the other departments as well, principally stuff that Denex does that we can't see because it's in 500-page engineering reports, but more often in police and fire. The, a park, a master plan is not the budget. So I'm, I'm not ready to vote for a document that says that the council has determined that there were 3.2 FTEs short and there should be additional FTEs added, and that our standard should be based on some national association, you know, average per person or whatever. Those are, our budget decisions are to be made in the budget. And so in some parts of the document, it's, it's more clearly described that, you know, our forecasts, the forecasts here are based on the following assumptions. That's different from a declarative statement that the department needs 3.2, 3.2 FTE more. That is not our, we cannot make that determination in this process. That is for the budget. So I would just encourage you, you and the manager to just take a look at this section and de-budget. It shouldn't be a budget proposal to us. We have a different process for that.
Okay.
So I'd be prepared, I mean, if we could, I mean, if those changes were made just on the, you know, as a, as a regular matter by the manager, I don't, I'm prepared to vote for it and score for it. None of it changes the SECA analysis or anything. It's just making it a better explanatory document and not interfering in the budget process. I'm supportive of the holding, but I think those two pieces, one could use some less specificity, and the other could use a bit more in order for it to be a useful citizen, citizen document as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
I just had one point of clarification earlier on the measuring discussion, just because I'm not sure if it was clear. In the document, it has a table that lists the 10-year projection of the total funding, but in the next table, it shows, you'll see that there's zero funding pledged for parks. I want to make that clear. Also, we'll be bringing forward a policy dealing with a budget policy for the council's consideration so you can start to, you know, think about different uses for the fund, including park projects. But we, we, I think the, the team was very conscious of not getting ahead of that, so that's why it's in there, but it's not budgeted, per se.
Okay. All right. So the recommended action we have before us is the, is the certification of the EIR, the approval of the plan and the interim authority to the city manager? Yeah, Councilmember Guerrero?
Yes, I do have a question. You referenced that you did not want to be specific on the financing. In the resolution, the third item, the plan includes park standards, capital improvement, and a financial plan to support the program. So that is, I just wanted to go back to your comment.
Yeah.
The financial plan is something I think we're being cautious of at this point.
In the resolution, where?
Attachment. Attachment three. Resolution 19-23.
Yeah.
It's towards, it's like the last, it's the last page.
Mm-hmm.
So there's this resolution that's included that, that we're expected to support, I mean, to approve this tonight? Okay, so that, I just wanted to point that out based on what you said.
Yeah, that's the recommended action. And I'm, as I say, I'm comfortable with that because it doesn't, my comments didn't go to the actual financing plan, which is this much dollars for this thing and all of that, as much as the, on the one side, the council's commitment on the operating budget side, which is not financed in this plan. And then on the other side, the richer description of the, of the other sources besides YR Bro and some of the specific development projects. And I'm comfortable, you know, delegating the revisions to that to the, to the city manager to sign off on after, after our action if that's appropriate.
Okay.
All right. So is there a motion on this?
Come with the clarificate, or the edits.
Okay. I'll second.
All right. It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion on item 15? All right, seeing none, all those in tables please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you. Great job. Item 16 is a workshop on the draft contract extension with Nomad Transit LLC, a wholly-owned subsidiary of Via Transportation Incorporated for operation of the West Sacramento On-Demand Rideshare Program through fiscal year 2019. Ms. Strand?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Again, Sarah Strand with Public Works. I also have Obina Emenike here from Via, in case any questions come up about the proposed contract extension. So as you all know, the West Sacramento On-Demand Rideshare Program was initiated as an early action item of the Mobility Action Plan. Council opted to execute a contract with Nomad Transit LLC in January of 2018, which led to the launch of a one-year pilot of this program in May 2018. The current pilot contract will terminate on May 13th of this year unless the council were to approve an extension of the contract. So the purpose of the workshop this evening is to present a draft of that contract extension along with a budget approach to get your feedback and direction. So as you know, we've been consistently engaging with the city council throughout this process since the initial contract was approved from the initial service design, including regular performance updates. Most recently, we came to the city council on February 20th to conduct a workshop, just to get your preliminary feedback on some of those year-two service scenarios and potential cost estimates that we were considering. At that time, the city council did provide us with some direction specifically relating to, relating to us that an expansion should be done such that it creates a reliable service that could enable car-free lifestyles, as well as direction to maintain the existing citywide geographic boundary rather than consider additional geographic service expansions. So the contract extension that is proposed as attachment one in your agenda report did seek to incorporate that feedback and produce a year-two scenario that would achieve those That being said, this is what is proposed in the attached contract extension currently. And I've put together a slide that demonstrates how this is different from the initial pilot year. Our initial pilot contract was for roughly $840,000. The proposed expanded service scenario in this agenda report would be $2.02 million. And what that includes relative to the initial pilot year is 59 weeks of service rather than 52, and that would be inclusive of holidays. The additional weeks would push us out through June 30th of 2019 so that we would become better aligned with the budget cycles and TDA funding cycles. The addition of an extra hour at the start and end of service on weekdays and the addition of Sunday service, maintaining the same hours of operation on weekend days. This would also include a fleet expansion, wherein there would be three standard mattress vans and one wheelchair-accessible mattress van added into the fleet, increasing the total from seven that are currently on the ground up to 11. And then I think most significantly to inform the costs associated with the year-two proposal is the driver hours. So currently, the pilot year, we're looking at by the May 13 termination date of the pilot contract, accomplishing about 23,500 total driver hours. The proposed fiscal year 2019 extension would cover a little over 54,000 driver hours.
Thanks.
That being said, the attachment two also contains a redlined version, if you're interested in the specific changes that are going to be proposed at this time by staff on May 1st. And they're primarily administrative changes, save for a couple of exceptions to that. As I just mentioned, the expanded fleet and hours of operation are a significant change to that scope of services and extending the performance period through the full fiscal year. I think the most significant change is that rather than the city retaining all revenues from fares, we would be allowing Nomad Transit to immediately reinvest those and report those to the city on a monthly basis to offset our costs as we go. And then lastly, there's just some language changes throughout that would become obsolete if we were to move forward. So that being said, based on previous feedback from the city council, we are continuing to propose that we utilize Transportation Development Act funding for this program. We're proposing that the program be funded in full by TDA funds. And that being said, the fiscal year 1920 apportionment estimates have been released. We're looking at an estimated $3.3 million to come with the FY 1920 apportionment. But that being said, we are initiating conversations with YCTD as they release their preliminary budget at the end of April every year. Based on last year's budget and assuming no changes to service, we would estimate that the upcoming fiscal year's costs could be around $2.2 million. So between the proposed cost of a year-two for the rideshare program and unchanged YOLO Bus network, that total would exceed our expected allocation by about $900,000. So what staff is proposing or would suggest that we propose when we return on May 1st is that that 900 for the time being be considered spent from the TDA reserve balance, which currently sits at $5.2 million. However, as we continue to work with YCTD through this current budget process and alongside their comprehensive operational analysis that is aimed at identifying operational streamlining opportunities, that there may be reduced expenses associated with that. In addition, if there are alternative funding sources that the council would suggest that staff return with a budget allocation request for, then we would appreciate your feedback on that at this time. So again, in summary, we have been consistently engaging with the council throughout the past year of this program. This evening, we are really soliciting your feedback and direction on the draft of the contract extension, the service plan and the budget approach that's included in your agenda packet. And any of your feedback that's provided this evening, we would incorporate into that for a final draft to return to council on May 1st to submit it for your potential approval. If you were to approve that contract extension on May 1st, what would follow from there is we would implement the additional weekday hours of operation as soon as possible, which is May 20th. And then the UC Berkeley final evaluation report is still ongoing. The survey was just released this past week. We would hope to come with final findings from that by June or July. And then the fleet expansion would also occur as soon as possible, which is August. The three standard vans would arrive and we would also recommend adding the Sunday service in at that time, followed by the additional wave van in September. So that being said, at this time, staff is respectfully requesting that the city council provide feedback and direction on the proposed budget approach and draft contract extension and direct staff to return on May 1st, 2019 to submit a contract extension and budget allocation request for city council consideration of approval. That concludes my presentation and I'm happy to take your questions at this time.
Sarah, just, could you quickly recap the reasons why the staff recommended and council concurred with the decision around not, not currently prioritizing extension to Sacramento?
Sure. Yeah. So there's a variety of reasons, I believe, why we discussed this at the last workshop in February. Primarily, it would require extensive coordination and permission from the existing transit operator, SACRTI in Sacramento, who currently has their own services operating. It would additionally significantly increase the cost of service, so $2.8 million was what the rough estimate that we proposed for a downtown expansion was when we presented to the city council at the last meeting. But operationally speaking, we were concerned that this could severely impact the quality of service. The reason it would be so expensive is because there's only two bridge crossings and just like existing transit services, that can result in delays and longer ETAs and degraded service for the local community if those vans were to get stranded downtown, specifically because there's a lot more attractors and major trip generators downtown. So those, those were some of the key reasons.
Okay. All right, we didn't want, have, thank you. We had one request for public comment, so we'll go there next. And that's by Denise Duncan.
I'm speaking as a citizen. I've been here almost 40 years and I pride myself in being able to be independent. Well, almost six years ago, I had a stroke. I am considered legally blind and I'm here to tell you, the Via opportunity that it has afforded my husband and myself, we're retired, has just been phenomenal. I am so grateful and with the, with the drivers. I know that the drivers care about what they're doing. They're conscientious about the networking within the city. And I find if you plan your time out, they're always there for you. It is an important factor within my household. I'm going to mentor on the Society for the Blind. I believe in giving back. I believe that Via is an opportunity, is a mechanism for people like me or elderly or young. I'm telling you, I watch the high schoolers because I work out at the rec center. So everything that the city has offered and afforded me in classes but hard to get to, Via has filled that spot. And it's been a remarkable journey. I hope and pray with all my heart that you do not take that away. And with the proposal of having more vans put on, that will help because I know from the community center to the library to doctor's appointments, there is a need. And for somebody like me who, 32 years ago, I was on the Quality, Urbanization and Development Board of Directors, helped forming before we were even a city, become involved in this community. And for three years, I fought for what I felt was right for our city. I have a lot vested in this city. I want to be able to continue and Via is amazing. And when I heard Mayor Kabolden talk in January, how when you need to go, and here's a little podunk, West Sacramento, you know, were unheard of. Well, you know what? We're not. And this is a mechanism, this is a tool, and it's an opportunity with the infrastructure to help take some of the cars off and some of the burdens off. Because when you build everything out, it means more people. And with those house tops, that's my buzzer. Anyway, I just, I stayed here this entire time to be able to say that, that the decision that you made about bringing Via onboard was one of the smartest things I've ever seen. And I invoke a person and get out in the community in Sacramento and I let them know what good it can do for pockets of people. But thank you for that opportunity of letting me come and say from my heart what is important for this city. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming. I'm only a little worried if you came by Via, you only have 10 minutes to go.
No, my, my husband is here, yes.
If you come by Via in a couple of months, you'll be fine, but right now... All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your comments. And, you know, there's this project, since we started this over a year ago, and looking at our mobility needs and how we can complement the work that's done at YOLO Bus and how we can increase ridership was all those things. And I said this just a few days ago, when I've been saying this around, when I spoke around climate change, it doesn't come to that. Having a service that we've been able to provide and create and on a, on very good work by our staff, the recommendation to go to this. We knew a need was there, we just didn't quite put our finger on it. But when you have something that creates, what's been surprising to me was something that creates an additional quality of life to residents like yourself.
Yes.
And many others that I've met in this community, from the only woman I met in a, in a bus, in a van, who, in a walker, was so excited because she got to get her haircut on her own for the first time, to the woman I met right across the street at the community center who was able to buy ice cream for the first time because she couldn't take it before because the YOLO Bus took too long to get back from Walmart to wherever she went to work. Because to the woman who had increased mobility into wheelchair, that she can get around and get out. And I think each one of us has experienced those people around this service. And what we do should touch people's lives and make it just a little bit better. And I'm extremely proud of the fact that we've gotten, that this service has started to emerge. There's some refining we're going to do here today, but I brought up earlier the work we're doing at YOLO Bus. And as a board member and of that board, the vice chair of that board, and understanding the dynamics of how funding for transit and going towards YOLO Bus, there is going to be a real need for us to reconcile this all and going forward. But I think the part that I am sure of is that there's a place for this, at least for me. And I will champion it because I've seen it work too well for people, picking up kids to get to work or get to, the servers who get to, who told us at a restaurant, if it wasn't for Via, I would not be able to work. For the students who are going to band practice who don't have a ride. It's just, the amount that it has opened my eyes to what we, what good a city can do to help people improve their lives has been astounding to me. It's been humbling to me. I take personally. But I want to dig into this a little more because there's some things I do want to refine about this, Sarah. But thank you for your words and it's a reminder to me about why we are doing this and the result of it. So Sarah, thanks very much around your work on this, I know, and to Via, the folks that are here, because it has been a bit of a revelation in our community. And I have any intention of seeing how we can continue, continuing it, seeing how we can make it a sustainable part of our mobility options. So in the report, I was just looking for before the speaker, I'm sorry for my name, spoke, and I was looking for, but, because I was not able to be here on the council meeting where you kind of have an update on the survey. And it said everything in quantified or with qualitative data, what writers have been saying about it, which is good and underscores what we just said. But how many riders overall have we had through the first, what are we now, in almost 10 months? Do you have a, I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
No, are you asking the total rides completed or accounts opened?
Total rides completed.
So we, as of today, I believe we are probably surpassed 68,000.
Good grief. All right, that's terrific. And I think about that in scope of, you know, one of the things that I'm really going to drive is how we take, because you know what I said on Woodland every first month? what I said on Woodland every first Monday of the month, there is a budget consideration coming up on this. And part of what I wanted to make sure we did this year, I think it's on one of our strategic initiatives for 2019, is how do we reconcile this? How do we make the data that we're getting from VIA, and because you're right, it does, it's going to come down to YOLO Bus. I know they had something, I want to say 600,000 riders throughout the county, I want to say something, in a year. But I want, but we need to sort of reconcile this. There is a notion at YCTD that VIA is taking riders away. And it should, these should complement each other. And part of what I'm going to get at is I'm fully supportive of extending this contract and looking at extending hours and the Sundays. But I want to make sure we do it so that every dollar of transit dollars we have is utilized in the best way possible. And I think that the fact that I talked to a lot of folks about is how are we going to sustain this? And part of the equation is, is we're going to make YOLO Bus more sustainable, number one. And that's, and it's got to fit with what we're getting with VIA. And I think that I'm still continuing to live by this, so, by that notion. On the hours, I 100% agree. I think, I think I probably heard the most feedback around extending into Sacramento, and probably because of the reason you sought is lots of attractions in Sacramento. But I agree with council's advice around, let's keep it focused on us and let it get better. And I have heard Sundays are important. And Sundays are extremely important. And so I 100% agree in going into Sunday service. What I question is the timeframes for Saturday and Sunday, I think, are going to 10 o'clock, as proposed. And I'm wondering the rationale between, until 11 o'clock, I'm guessing it's around either work hours, late work hours for folks on the weekdays, as well as Rayleigh Field games or some other attractions. And what I would suggest is maybe going to 11 on Saturday because there's night games on Rayleigh Field and events on Saturday as well. And maybe reducing the Sunday hours to, from 10 to 9 is a compensating factor. I'm not sure how the council will feel about that, but just, it just seems like Sunday from 9 to 9 to 9 might be a sustainable way to, for folks that want to shop on Sundays, use it to go to church, whatever they're doing on Sundays, might, that might make more sense. I think it's an earlier night for everybody on Sunday. But I'm just positing that possible, that possibility. The other area is on the timing of when this would take effect. So going back to the schedule, I don't have it in front of me, you had the timeline. So if we approve this in May, it would take us till August to be able to extend those hours? Is that?
So it's kind of phased out because some things will take longer than others. The weekday hours of expansion, we were proposing as soon as possible, which would be May 20th.
Okay.
And then
Thank you.
August would be the fleet expansion and Sunday service, and the additional wave vehicle would be in September.
Okay. And that's just, that's purely a function of they've got to retrofit the bus, the van and everything?
The Sunday service was more about spacing it out. That could occur sooner. The vehicles, that's logistically constrained.
Okay, that's what I was asking. I don't, I don't have an opinion one way or the other on Sunday service. Whether it can start in earlier or not, I'm just, I don't see a reason why it shouldn't. I mean, if the demand is there today, does that increase the cost?
Yeah, so there is a cost increase associated with that, just with the driver hours, you know, the number of Sundays between now and August.
If we, I mean, again, I think the cost we have and not knowing where YOLO Bus budget is going to go, I'm not kind of thrilled or not looking at the prospect of jumping ahead and then having an issue right away with their budgeting process. So I'm fine with the timeframe. I just wanted to ask the question, why are we doing that?
Yeah, it was really just trying to be a little bit conservative of balancing the cost of the service by making that addition a little bit later, saving a little bit of cost.
All right. But thank you for, I don't have any comments at this point. Thank you, Sarah. The one constant feedback I get too, from drivers and from folks, is you. People call you and ask to help get them set up or arrange a ride. People know Sarah. So thank you very much for all the work you do to make this happen. And you work with the community and the drivers. Thank you.
Mayor Portemar Roscoe.
Thank you. I had the same response about Sundays. I thought it was a pretty late night. And I wondered, because I'm pretty price sensitive, and was wondering if, when I'm traveling around on Sunday nights, there's not as much traffic out there. And I'm wondering, do we have to employ all of the fleet on low volume days? I mean, maybe there's a way of measuring when those vehicles absolutely need to be out there. You know, I know that 3 and 6 are very popular times, especially with high schoolers and other folks that are traveling around the city. But also, I did notice that the part that I was most excited about, the additional three vans and then the wheelchair accessible vans, those aren't for another several months. And so we'd only be really getting eight months of those, that use for the increase in cost. Yeah, I guess the contract ends, it's in May, right? It ends in May? So we'd only have use of the wheelchair accessible, I mean, assuming that we, if we can extend, yeah, continue it, that's a different matter. But, you know, we're doubling the price of this and it's a valuable, valuable service. Don't get me wrong. I'm just trying to find out if there's any way, like Councilmember Ledesma mentioned, you know, where we can trade. Because I know Saturday night would be probably a lot more utilized. You'd have vans everywhere as opposed to paying for a van as you're sitting idly somewhere waiting for a ride at a less busy time. But I don't know what those numbers are. I know, Sarah, you're a little attuned to those. Got to commend you, Sarah. I always do. You do fantastic work. And it's been wonderful to watch you present on the program over the last couple of years. And I want to also thank Ms. Duncan for coming up and speaking to us because it's comments from people like you who, you know, give us feedback about the value of life, that, you know, the change. And Councilmember Ledesma, I know the woman you're talking about named Robin, she's somebody who's in our active aging knit and crochet group and uses the wheelchair. I saw her buzzing across Jefferson Boulevard yesterday, probably headed to the community center. And I know that Robin's mobility has changed exponentially since bringing VIA into our city. So thank you so much for sharing your experience and staying this late to do so. It does provide very valuable feedback for us.
Yeah, I wanted to, just on the Sunday issue, because I've been probably the loudest advocate of Sunday service in part because it, but at a lifeline level, it's essentially a lifeline service. It's, I mean, it's not based on enormous demand. It's that there has to be, you know, there has to be a way to, if you've, if you've either chosen or have no choice, there has to be a way to get to the supermarket. There's got to be a way to get to the drugstore and, you know, pick up, pick up some medicine. There has to be a way to spend your grandmother's birthday with her, which may go till 9 o'clock at night. So it's not, but you don't necessarily 10 or 13 vans to serve that. I'm willing to wait a little bit longer as a rider, but I, but I'm not, I can't necessarily wait until the next day for all those things. So Sunday service is absolutely critical, but I, and I understand it's not entirely at our discretion. I mean, you have to pay people, I mean, these are employees who have, we have schedules and all that that have to be worked out as well. So we don't have the unfettered discretion to, you know, say, let's make it until 6:30, 7:00 or whatever. So, but I think the comments that have been made are exactly on. That, I mean, to me, the bigger question here, because you've incorporated everything that we wanted to achieve in the last, in the last agreement. And I know you're still working some of the details, even in these negotiations out. But the bigger questions are the long-term and the financing, which are obviously related to one another. Because, you know, this is an important extension, but we also need to get relatively soon to a point where we know we're going to be doing this on a long-term basis. Because some of the key choices around financing and around what we do on YOLO, the YOLO Bus side depend on that choice. It drives me nuts that we would even be contemplating spending exactly the same money on the bus, the fixed route bus system, as with 68,000 rides now being taken by this, by this new service. It seems it's utterly unsustainable financially. And it's just, it's just fiscally stupid from a city perspective. For YOLO Bus, it's like, well, it's disruptive if you take money away from us. But we're not about the age, we're not about the service provider. We're about the, we're about the citizen, the person who needs to get from point A to point B. That's our job. So I'm less concerned about it. And so part of me wants to start, start now, sort of not wait, I mean, we don't, we don't exist at the whim of YOLO Bus's budget. We're the ones that make the TDA allocations and then go to Seco get their approval. So we don't, I mean, we could determine right now that we are going to reduce, you know, we're going to, we're going to have a schedule by which we're going to make some reductions, on the assumption that this has to be sustainable over the long run. The fact that we have a $5.4 million reserve in the TDA fund should not lead us to make undisciplined financial decisions, in my view. And that, it should not be, well, we have the money to pay for everything that we're doing right now, so we should do that. That's not the point. It's, I mean, is that actually a necessary public service that's being provided, given that in virtually every case, there's no, unless you are taking a bus from somewhere in the city to Sacramento or to Davis or to Woodland, there's really no good reason to take a bus for internal, for internal uses in the city any longer. VIA is a better option on every dimension. And people are, you know, I think both, both VIA would report, and YOLO Bus is apparently also reporting that people are making that choice. So we should be spending less on that same service. If, so, you know, so part of me wants to say, you know, we should, we should just sort of unilaterally say, right now, we're going to reduce it by whatever, $100,000 or $150,000 from YOLO Bus. And YOLO Bus, you've got to figure that part out. But we can't take that very far, right? Because the smarter thing would, you know, over a long period of time, would probably be reduce YOLO Bus by a fairly, a more significant amount. But we can't do that if we don't know whether we're going to be doing VIA past May of 2020. That's the problem. Because we can't, we can't hollow out our transit infrastructure, weak as though it is in most cases in terms of ridership. We can't, we can't eliminate that infrastructure without knowing that we have a long-term commitment from our provider or from some alternate provider to do that. So I think we need to spend, I think it would be useful for us to be sending some direct fiscal signals right now, at, you know, relatively small amounts, but to determine that, you know, we're not budgeting 2.2 again. We're going to take it down a little bit, partly to say, YOLO Bus, this is, you know, this is coming, take it seriously. And partly just because it is the right thing to do fiscally. But also to, you know, in the future discussions with VIA, we've got a, we've got a, as soon as that Berkeley report comes out, we're going, I think we're going to need to be in a position where we're ready to have that conversation. Are we going to be doing this for real? Is this, are we really going forward this on a long-term basis so that we can optimize the rest of the transportation system and the financing structures around it in a way that will support, will support that and that depends on that? Councilmember Sandin.
Thanks. And I share some of the concerns about the, or share all the concerns about the funding. I think once, once we, or if we take from the reserve fund and then rely on that, that only lasts for five years. And if we do want this as a long-term solution, which I think, when you look at the love of VIA and the love of goats, I think, you know, we've hit on some things that are really important to folks. And my personal, my personal, and you've heard this before, and we've talked about this, my research is about, has, when I was a doctoral student, was about connecting people with resources. And it's so fundamental and it's so important. So I do think, and once people rely on something, I think to take it away, I don't think we can get there. So we have to come up with a longer-term solution and a longer-term plan. People will move here, just like they do around, in Europe, they might move near a train, a train stop, because they can rely that that's going to take them to the central business district of their city. We want people to move here because they know, I mean, this is a service. They know they can get anywhere in west Sacramento, which is, that's unheard of. That's why people are talking about us. That's, that's why we, this is so successful. So, you know, I really, I think the pinch is, is trying, is having the conversation and I think ripping off the Band-Aid, maybe that's not the right description. But I think we have to deal with the funding issue, or else this is, this will be just a pilot that we had for three years or something. And that's not what I think, that's not where I want to go.
Just emphasize a point one more time, is that there, you know, this VIA doesn't solve every single thing. And if we, if we look to even VIA-like extensions in Sacramento at some point, or other, or other innovations in the mobility environment, we're going to want to have, I mean, we wouldn't have been able to do this project if we didn't have this TDA reserve. And so we're going to want to, not, I don't want to even program $5.4 million, you know, over 10 years for just VIA, because we're going to need to keep innovating as we go forward. And this is our only source to be able to do that. Councilmember Gero.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to add that, you know, along with our presenter tonight from the audience, Charlotte Dorsey also came up at the last VIA presentation, helping to, help us understand the impact on a broader level of the community as well, for those that are elderly and disabled. And I think that was very helpful to, you know, understand the benefit of VIA and incredibly important, you know, microtransit program here in west Sacramento. The only thing is, I do want to make sure that we are careful because there are, you know, local, you know, state and federal requirements for the funding that we are using. And so we just want to make sure that as we look at which funding sources we use, that we take that into consideration. And, you know, Councilmember Ledesma's, you know, referencing how there's, it appears like there's competition. And VIA is filling a gap. I think VIA is definitely filling a gap. We're looking at expanded hours. And during the, you know, peak periods that we're noticing VIA, which I'd like to study more about, this is a time when our Yolo County Transit's not in full operation. So I think VIA fills some gaps that is important in our community. And I want to be able to, you know, look into that more. And I'm glad you have some of the metrics that are going to be taken into consideration with the new contract, because I want to be able to understand that. In understanding the metrics, I was, you know, I was also a part of the Yolo County Transit Citizen Advisory Group. And they provided metrics on operations. So there's some, you know, there's some here that are being gathered. And, you know, have our Transportation, Mobility and Infrastructure, you know, Commission get, you know, some regular reports. It might help us to navigate, and that helped in the Yolo County Transit, to help navigate, you know, the impact, for example, of Golden Winter, you know. So it wasn't there before, but the impact on the ridership is it took longer, you know, to get from point A to point B. So in, you know, just helping us to, you know, shift and move quickly to provide the support, like for example, the fires and, you know, needing to get, you know, people around more. So maybe we needed to shore up more vans and be fluid in that process so that we can get people, I mean, off bikes. That was probably a really hard time for people to ride the bikes. VIA could have stepped up a little more and provide more support in taking passengers in and doing some, you know, social media and outreach. So we show that we're responsive, you know, to needs in the community at the time. And so that would be, you know, also the benefit of providing reports so that we can quickly shift around. So just one, so just the regular reports is something I recommend if we can provide those. And that way it helps, I remember when I was looking at those reports and Yolo County Transit, it was overwhelming. But as I continued to, you know, read those reports, I got accustomed to understanding it and appreciating it and recognizing the value of those reports to, you know, see what the impact and see what input as a, as a citizen I had to provide guidance. The other question I had was the Dynamics decision. These are independent contractors. I don't know if you had a chance, could you provide some input on that?
Sorry, what were you asking?
Oh, the Dynamics decision on independent contractors. Just asking our council...
These are employees, though.
These are not employees.
These are not employees. They're independent contractors.
They're not independent contractors.
Right. They're independent contractors of VIA.
Of VIA, correct. And is there, so the Dynamics decision does have, does not have an impact on independent contractors?
Not these independent, in some cases, yes, but not these.
Okay, not these? Okay, just, I just wanted to find out.
Yeah, TNCs are eligible to utilize independent contractors per the ABC rule that came out of the Dynamics ruling.
Okay, good to know. I just wanted to get clarification on that. Thank you.
Yeah. And they're regulated through the CPUC under that, yeah.
Okay, very good. And those are all my comments. Thank you.
I mean, Mr. Mayor, I think you hit, yeah, I think, I think you hit upon the point. I think you caught yourself a little bit in the fact that, yeah, your comments around thinking about this five years from now. And I think you caught yourself and think, you came back to the fact that, I don't know what's going to be here in five years from our mobility perspective, right? It's changing so rapidly. I think that's one of the things I would agree 100% about how we structure in long-term play with VIA and having the ability to change course. I would tell you, YCTD is filling it very clearly around the changes. That's why its pressures are there, because it's just, it's not just VIA, it's the jump bike. the jump bike as well, and now scooters, and all of it combined. We forced a massive amount of transformation in our community, all in a two-week period, when we launched jump bikes and, or Via then jump bikes a week later. And, and we've talked about this independently many times, it's just the community all of a sudden has all these options. And where YCTD is losing ridership is very much in the inner-city routes, point-to-point. They're figuring out Via, they're figuring out jump bikes as a way, mechanism, as a real, genuine way to get it point-to-point. And, and, and YCTD is facing other pressures as well, be it from climate change, legislation at the state level, and how they have to go to electric, forgot by 20, 24, 25, I'm gonna say. So there's some very real changes happening at their world that we're gonna, I think that's part of what I asked about in terms of working with the city staff, is what is our strategy? How are we gonna make YCTD work at its most efficient for us to fit in this new dynamic? And it's not gonna be a one-year process. We're got the, we're going to have to shake this out a little bit as we learn more about how people are getting around using Via or jump bikes, which both of which are very data-rich. And we just don't have that kind of rich environment data with the Yolo bus, but we're gonna have to figure this out. Two, I would remind everybody that we structured a new contract for YCTD and TransDev with very much, we, we, I'd asked to change the weighting on, on more towards innovation and technology on how, and have a more, I think a shorter contract time, I think it's the five years, and we're in year one, so that if they, we, I didn't want to lock into, I didn't see the value of locking to a 12-year contract with an aging model of bus systems. So we asked TransDev to, hey, have a five-year out and have options for things like microtransit, autonomous buses, whatever else. So I think the part of the comprehensive operational review process, right, that they're gonna be going through with TransDev and the, and the contractor is aimed to look at just that. They, YCTD has contracted or has, we've approved the use of a microtransit model in, in Knights Landing. And this kind of change hitting, we have caused YCTD to think a little bit differently about how in and acts transit. So I think it's still to be seen. I think if you look at it at a static point and what's offered today, you're right, we need to be sending signals about financially what that means. But I would tell you, we've already sent the signals to them around, we need to change the dynamic, and YCTD is getting there. I think that's why we need to work with staff and all of the community and everybody else here, community's input about what does it need to look like in two years and five years. And that's what I, I think somebody asked me a few weeks ago, what did I mean by this YCTD strategy as part? That's what I mean. We have to figure this out, and we have to help steer as much as we can that district or any other transit district that can provide service that meets our needs as a community. Because what we, what we found out is, both through jump bikes and through Via, that there's other modes we can use that are at disposal, so.
And that are eligible for those same funds.
That's exactly right.
I mean, YCTD, like any agency, is there, I mean, there, as far as I can tell from their director, he's thinking about it as, okay, I have $2.2 million, how can I use that more efficiently to meet the needs of West Sacramento? And that's great. That's, that's a, you know, that's a significant progression in the way that they've, they've thought about their business. But it's not the right, it's not the right, from our perspective, they don't have $2.2 million, $2.2 million. They are one provider now of many mobility options that we have.
Yeah.
And, you know, the best, the best option for us might be YCTD at $4 million, or it might be YCTD at $1 million. And they have something to say about that, but it's our decision, in the same way that we made the decision to, you know, over the strenuous, you know, threat to impale himself by the Public Works Director, to allocate all of our TDA to transit a couple of years ago, instead of allocating it to the road fund, you know, some, some of the excess to the road fund. That's our choice. So YCTD has no call on any money that we don't choose to allocate. And I, I just, you know, even if we didn't have an agreement with, even if we didn't have a long-term arrangement with Via, we can't go back to what we were doing, because that wasn't working. I mean, we cannot run empty buses. Right now, we're running even emptier buses. And so it's, it seems like that's, that's not an acceptable answer to the community, is look at this great service that we're operating, and we're still operating all the same old stuff, too, that is even emptier than it was before. So some reduction, I think, just makes fiscally prudent sense. And it's, and it's the marker to YCTD that, yes, everything that Chris Ledesma has been telling you every single meeting is true. And he's, and, you know, and he's, he's got, the city is serious about treating our role in mobility as a broker, and not, we have not assigned a mobility, a mobility monopoly to any one agency. We're not gonna do it with Via either. We're not gonna put all of our eggs in one Via basket and say, everybody now has to write, write in that either. So I think it is important for us to really, you know, remind ourselves that we are the, the city of West Sacramento decides where the city of West Sacramento's TDA funds go. And, and YCTD is essentially a contractor of ours, I mean, with a, you know, with a more of a legal responsibility for planning and what have you. It's, they're, they're, they're a tool for us to be able to meet the kinds of needs of Mrs. Duncan and everyone else that we've heard about, you know, across the, across the service. I feel like there's some, at least waving of a gauntlet, even if we don't really lay it down quite yet, is, is, is just important to help to, to, you know, shake folks up a little bit, our partners, so. All right, so do you have sufficient feedback to return on May 1st?
Let me just paraphrase to make sure that I'm getting some of this right, because there was a lot in some of the recent comments. So in terms of the hours of operation, it sounded like there was general agreeance, but for possibly extending hours to run a little bit later on Saturdays, possibly to 11:00 PM is what I think I was hearing. And then I wasn't sure what the direction was on Sunday service, if those hours were appropriate. We do, the, the way it's operated, it already has flexible supply, so it's never all vehicles out at one time. The number of drivers out on, in, in the city is trying, they're trying to pace it with demand, so that they're being efficient with how we're spending money on driver hours. So that piece is addressed. In terms of the actual hours of operation, I wasn't clear what the guidance was.
I suggested Sunday, just so we wouldn't have a changing cost structure, is removing the nine to 10 o'clock hour on Sunday. I think, I think is what it is, right? To, so to add it back to Saturday, so you can go to 11.
So add an hour to go to 11:00 PM on Saturday and start an hour later on Sunday? Is that what you were saying?
End an hour.
End an hour earlier.
End an hour earlier, okay.
So nine to nine on Sunday.
So nine to nine on Sunday.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, you, I mean, you'll have to model it, because if, you know, the demand, the savings that you would get from nine to 10 on Sunday is not gonna cover the cost more, most likely of the, of Saturday night, for exactly the reasons why you're proposing it. So it might be able to end at eight o'clock on Sunday or some other, some other set of changes. And, you know, as I was concurring that, I think that, you know, that's, as long as it's not like two-hour window, you know, a substantial enough timeline of Sunday that you can do the essentials of life and family and community, you know, to be able to adjust within that frame in order to keep the cost constant.
We'll take a closer look at that. The other piece that I just wanted to get clarification on, I wanted to acknowledge all of the council members' feedback on coordination with YCTD. We have been meeting with them semi-regularly throughout this process. Everything that you said about these alternative modes also potentially impacting service are a key part of our conversations is actually, it's actually very difficult for us to parse out the exact impact of Via versus what was jump versus what was scooters.
Versus what was the national transit.
Yeah, versus gas prices, versus the economy. All of those things are contributing factors. So we have been giving them heads up that, well, the council's been giving us direction based on data preceding the existence of Via, that there are some routes that the ridership, I think, already does merit those conversations. So YCTD is aware of some of those things, and we do have an upcoming meeting with them to initiate some of those further coordination steps. Based on what I just said, I want to make sure that that is the direction I'm receiving, or if there's anything more specific than that that I should take from this.
So can I just understand the timing of it? So the, what I want to avoid is where we're, like, in a, in, like, page 172 of the budget, there's some TDA allocation that's getting made, and that's based solely on what YCTD's budget request of us is, as opposed to highlighting for us the choices that, that we need to make. And I don't think, we typically don't do that, I don't think. I think it's typically been a part of the budget or some other action item, but I, it needs to be before us as well, as opposed to just derivative of YCTD's direction, YCTD's direction. So I'm comfortable not laying down the gauntlet today specifically, but signaling it clearly and then setting up the moment for us to decide, I think is really, is really important.
Okay, and we can return if there's any updates in, in June, as well as the TDA claim is where these things would really get locked in later this summer.
But I do think you need to convey the message that was, that Mayor, that the Mayor had mentioned on, you know, we are interested in laying, not we, I'm not, I disagree with that point of view, but that that was expressed on City Council. As you, you know, go back and have that conversation, because, you know, funding is gonna be an issue for City Council, and we have to take a look at all funding sources. And so if we have to back out some funding from YCTD, that's, that may be a consideration.
Yeah, the other microtransit pilots that aren't, that are not succeeding like ours are in the country, because there are hundreds of these happening all over the place, but the ones that aren't, aren't really breaking through, it's because they're not making the changes to their fixed route bus system. So they're, they're just adding on another cost structure on top of a hollowed-out, you know, budget, budget commitment. And when we started this process, we were very, the council was very clear that if this works, we are going to be shifting those dollars. So it's, this is not news to, to them, and it's just basic good budgeting, and it's just backing up what the, what our representative to their board has been saying both here and there for a year, so. Good?
Okay.
Thank you, Senator.
I have one other item to research, because I know you, we have, A, you've been working YCTD, I know. But there was a, a part that, that came up, that's come up in feedback, is that Via's ability to take state dollars that are allocated, I'm sure, the state, and then I don't work for the state, so somebody might have helped me out with state issues, cards that you can use on, on transit, but Via doesn't take them. Maybe the mayor knows, because he's.
Yeah, so the state, I mean, the state covers the cost of, will cover the cost of, you know, a bus pass.
Oh, the state employees.
Right, or their state employee package.
And there's CalWorks program as well, that they.
Yeah, so there, there are a variety of public, public programs that provide some sort of direct assistance to riders for transit, and our question had been, you know, one is Via eligible, and if not, what would we need to do at the state and/or federal level in order to make these, to make these kind of services eligible?
Yeah, we're still looking into that. Pre-tax commuter benefits, they are eligible, but in terms of the direct commuter benefit programs that different state organizations choose to provide, we would have to work more closely with, with those organizations.
Okay, I didn't want that to fall off the radar.
And with CalWorks, I think you would need to connect with the county Health and Human Services Agency. They, I, I think it's eligible. I don't think there's any limitations to provide, you know, so they have a pass that they can use to pay for transportation, to, for employment, things like that.
We'll, we'll look into that.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe legally eligible. I think it's, the problem is probably that a lot of these agencies, because there's only been one provider, have never really, they haven't created, they haven't crafted a lot of their programs and language in ways that are more open. You know, in my, you know, my, my, my regular job, we didn't, we only buy RT passes or Yolo bus passes, those are the only options. It's not that, it's not there's some law that prevents us necessarily from, from covering a Via thing, it's just nobody's ever thought of it, so it doesn't exist. And so the, you know, the TMAs and the other organizations that work with employers may end up, may be another channel into that, too. Or some of the Seco funds that are for the TMAs could be conditioned in a way that says, you know, you have to make these available also to, to these sorts of services.
And also student, college, you know, student passes, I don't know if they provide, if you, we have access to using that for Via as well. Do, college, yeah.
Yeah, so for example, the students at Los Rios, as an example, pay a fee, and that covers a, you know, they, and they essentially get a bus pass, but it's, I mean, I don't think, nobody's ever approached them about microtransit alternatives, because in Sacramento, microtransit's only being offered by the transit provider.
Right. I think all weekly passes are so competitively priced already that that may be the equivalent of just calling it a student pass, but we can, we can reach out to.
So a student doesn't pay for a bus pass on, on RT or Yolo bus, because, if they're at Los Rios, because their, the fee is already fully covers it.
Got it, got it.
So the question is, could we, could we get Los Rios, as an example, to agree to the same, it would cost them next to nothing, really, but, so that, so they, so that students of all ages in West Sacramento, who are at least coming to the West Sacramento Center, could do so, or come to the library or access other supportive services.
So there would be a mechanism that they can drop the funding in, and the student can have access to Via.
Yeah.
I can reach out to.
Essentially bulk purchasing passes at a cheaper rate.
I can reach out to Dean Pimentel about that.
Great. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then, Council Calendar, Ms. Berlin.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Here's some events that are coming up in the next couple of weeks. Tomorrow, the Mayor Potomac Roscoe mentioned the spring break boxing camp that she's been attending, and tomorrow's the award ceremony, and that's at 2:30, and that's at the PD in their warehouse annex. Then next Wednesday, April 24th, is the fire department badge pinning ceremony, and that's at 5:00 in the Galleria. Wednesday, May 1st, we have the Sycamore Trail Phase One completion ceremony. That's at 20, 21 Michigan Avenue at 10:30 AM. The State of the City will be on Thursday, May 2nd at 5:30 in the Galleria. And then an item that hasn't made it to the calendar yet is on May 3rd, we're gonna have the Disney Resort Free Movie Night at Bright Park. That's put on by the Disney organization. They're coming, and they're going to show Return of the Jedi, and that's at 7:45.
What day is that? I'm sorry?
May 3rd, Friday, May 3rd.
Right before Cap to Cap.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's, it's a little thing, but it's kind of a big deal. So the same, you know, the same contact, former resident of West Sacramento, who, back when Council, Mayor Potomac Roscoe was a, just was an active citizen volunteer, Parks Commissioner, helped, helped create the linkages for Disney to invest in Kaboom, also insisted that with this kind of a program, that West Sacramento be included as well. So just thanks to Kerry for work on that. Thank you.
Any other questions on that calendar? All right, City Manager Report?
No report tonight, thank you.